This conference will now be recorded.
Honesty behind this and naturalness.
It's not just a weapon.
It's natural.
Yeah, it's natural, naturally it's.
Exactly.
So if you prefer for me to sit over there, I'm happy to sit there. I didn't realize that was about six thirty.
Yeah.
Should we go on our.
No, I think we won't.
Go sit in your car.
We won't kick you out, but it might make more sense if you, if you want to sit in that chair if you want to. It might make more sense if you come to the team one more. Ready? I mean, it's up to you.
I'll do that.
We are gonna call the board to order at five thirty-one P M. And we have all three members present here in town hall. We're gonna get right into it.
We have a copy of the room, I get it.
I mean, yeah, yeah. We, uh, we have a joint budget meeting at six thirty, and I think we'll probably be getting there right about work through other things depending on how, how quickly we move. So the first item of business is the Southern Berkshire assessment.
Did you get, by the way, you may not have seen it, but.
See the financials?
Yeah, I did get the financials today and I forwarded them to you.
Yeah, I didn't print them out because they said they were confidential, you know. But I love that. I mean, they're dropping revenue just horrendous. It was like three hundred thousand dollars.
He told me that on the phone.
Right, right.
Yeah.
So a lot of the stuff looked very consistent, you know, their cost, insurance goes up, but their share of revenue just.
The number of calls also gets unexpectedly, I think I mentioned that in previous meetings.
Yeah, you mentioned that.
Yeah, that, and, and that's what, it's not that their return rate changed, it's that the calls were low. But he says they were already back up to like six more.
My one. The one thing I noticed in glancing at was, did you see the bad debt numbers?
Yes, I did wonder about that.
Yes, I saw that.
What exactly is the debt?
Yeah, the, the interesting thing is there's different ways to do bad debt. How long, you know, is it a year of bad debt? Is it, you know?
What's it for?
Well, it's because people aren't paying their bills.
Oh.
Yeah, it's a bill. But two is when you have bad debt, you can usually pay a company to go after.
Collect.
I thought the, the bad debt was interest that they, interest and fees they had to pay on debts they weren't paying on.
Uh, usually bad debt in the, in the industrial business, commercial.
Have a copy and file.
Yeah, uh, bad debt is, um.
What we're talking about is.
There's, you know, people that, they bill people and they haven't received the money.
Um, bad debt expense. Is.
See.
There would be interest. There, I would suspect they would have additional interest on loans.
Assuming they made any loans. And don't just owe.
You know, an art form that might.
Well, interest is its own line. It's all. It's twelve thousand, twenty-one thousand, five thousand. Bad debt expense is three thirty thousand, three eighty, three thousand, four hundred, six thousand.
It may be small, but it's getting bigger.
Like, no, bad debt expense is not.
No, I mean, interest expense too.
Yeah, but I, I don't, I don't know.
No, I know.
You could ask me a question, I don't know, because it's not pocket. Bad debt is typical, you bill someone for the bill and they haven't paid you.
And it, it might make sense that it costs.
Yeah, you have to, you have to keep it, you know, there's accounting rules and regulations. You have to keep it in your, you know, your financials, but after a period of time.
It's worth asking them?
Yeah, I think you need to ask them, can you clarify your, what you mean by bad debt? Is this, is this for service that you have billed, but people have not paid, been, you know, the customer hasn't paid yet?
But shh, don't the debt collectors buy that debt?
They'll buy that debt or you can pay someone that will, they take like ten percent or fifteen percent. I don't know what the.
They can get cut.
They take a cut. And I tell you, they can be really good. Because a lot of times you can set someone on my phone or program, say they owe twelve hundred dollars. Well, we'll reduce it to eight hundred dollars and you give us eighty dollars a month for a year or something like that. Because what, if it's, if it's a customer and that bad debt is, you know, is that goes against their financials, it could hurt their credit.
But is it a little different when it's a hospital or an ambulance as opposed to a call?
No, I'm telling you right now, there is hospitals in the country that have gone after people that have not paid their bill.
I can tell you they, I had a building issue where I was told I didn't owe it. And then I got hounded by a debt collector and it turned out that, that the people who had told me I didn't owe it, it was like, it wasn't even a big deal. It was just a dispute as to, because I had gone to P T like fourteen times. And I had thought I had paid for all fourteen and apparently they had, because they kept screwing up the building, I hadn't paid for one. So, but if the debt collector came and I, and I resolved it, but I'm just saying like, they'll go after anything.
They'll go after it, but they, they'll cut deals. They're not gonna get dollars.
I mean, it was like seventy-five bucks. It wasn't, I, I just didn't think I owed it.
There's, believe me, there's hospitals that do it.
And it was essentially a hospital. Anything else you want me to ask them about?
Well, this is showing with the local, well, the local government subsidies are throwing me off a little bit.
Yeah, what's the difference between local government subsidies and, uh, well, service receipts is ours, but it's the other one I was thinking. Contributions. Are we a contribution or local government subsidy?
No, I think we're the local government subsidies, but last year all the towns pooled for what, three fifty thousand? But that would have been what, twenty twenty-four budget? Wasn't it really twenty twenty-three? I was just surprised to see one eighty thousand.
Right, and then four twelve, because four twelve, if it's a, you know, we paid supposedly the sum was three fifty last year, right? And it's would be about four seventy-six with a thirty-six percent increase this year. And I don't see either of those two numbers here, so, uh, so what, why?
Can we dig a little deeper into that? I mean, because that's where we are on here.
So are we in twenty twenty-three for F Y twenty twenty-four? Right? That's what we're talking about?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, where is the three hundred and fifty thousand? Is that in the twenty twenty-four budget or is it twenty twenty-three? What's going on? It said anticipated based on third quarter twenty-three.
Um. Yeah, I.
How did they run out of nearly seven hundred thousand dollar deficit and three hundred thousand dollar deficit there before?
Well, you, if you take a look at what their depreciation, that's just a placeholder. That is not actual dollars.
What depreciation?
Yeah.
Well, some years it is.
No.
One twenty-one, one two-three, one hundred and seventy-four.
But those are just placeholders for financials. When you buy a truck and you say, I'm gonna depreciate it over five years, that goes in your books. So it can't be their expense their year.
In any case, I mean, the seventy thousand dollars we pay them seems small compared to what other towns run their ambulance.
Yeah.
I know, it is.
Which is.
It's kind of interesting when you see what they have billing and collection fees. Their debt, their bad debt has steadily gone up, but they have not spent any more money on collecting it.
Probably the collection, like they are definitely using a, I, he told me, they're using a.
A service.
A service. And my guess is the service, it must be almost a flat fee because it doesn't. And maybe not, because it was down the year the collection was down, right? So it must be a percentage. Anyway, I will.
Was there anything else that you wanted to share about, because you were able to speak to one or two or more people?
So I talked, uh, I just talked to Joan.
Joe Graci.
No, um, Alford. Uh, I just talked to a finance day member from Alford. Because they're also quite bothered by the assessment, assessment methodology. What the compromise she put forward, and I have a spreadsheet from her, but it, it's pretty much self-explanatory, is like everybody else. She doesn't think E Q V is fair. She used E Q V and population because, you know, Barrington claims that using just call volume isn't fair because many, many of those calls are not from their citizens. Well, I'm sure many of our calls in the summer are not our citizens either. Right? A lot of the people that are calling in the summer are summer people, right? And there's, I don't know how you even ascertain that, but it's immaterial. The reality is, if they were running the service themselves, they would be answering those calls.
Why are they in like there, they've got restaurants and all these other things to stay on there.
Right.
You know, they got hotels or, you know.
And, and as, um, Joe, when I talked to him last, said himself. It, you know, they, the billing rate for, uh, Butternut is very high. Because most of the people that are buying ski tickets can pay their bills and have insurance. So the return rate on, on Butternut calls, which from what I hear are, are many, um, you know, they're, they're getting paid for that, which is great. And, and you know what? If, if they wanted to mess with the numbers, to take out the, the calls that are, they are reimbursed for and do the work to do that, I'd be willing to listen to that as an argument, but otherwise, I'm sorry. You're the biggest, you're, you know, you have the highest per capita income, you have the most population, you have the most calls paid your way. Can you use seventy-five percent of the calls and pay for forty-three percent of the costs? Sorry, just no.
Yeah, that's good. I mean, to have more access to tax law.
And, and as, and they also have higher local receipts. Um, so, you know, I ran three models, just, you know, to be on the record, and I summarized them in that first table. Um, just call volume, calls plus mileage, which is basically what I did last year. Um, and then a model that used all four things. You know, I used E Q V, population, per capita income, uh, call volume and local receipts. And like, you know, I, it, the conversation has to start somewhere, but I think that, um, at the end of the day, the current assessment methodology isn't okay. And I think I did mention this sometime, but Joe also told me that Barrington did, uh, did have a study done and it was gonna cost them seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to run one ambulance to the E M T level. So they're not surprised, shockingly, they're not really enthusiastic about running their own ambulance. So they don't have guerrilla power anymore from my perspective, and I don't think the other small towns should be carrying their weight.
So before signing this, do we just need to come up with a date?
That would be a good idea.
For a meeting?
Yep. It's the last page.
We're not really hoping to change this budget cycle, right?
It seems very unlikely, or the last page. I mean, it seems unlikely. And we have to face the fact that, you know, seven one isn't a terrible price for. My ambulance call cost more than two thousand dollars. I didn't pay it. The insurance paid it, but it still tossed that. I bet it did. Those guys are gonna carry me off the. Um. I owe the Morton two grand, mind you.
Right off the top of my head, seems like maybe the week before town meeting or the other week before town meeting, because we're done with the war. So like the twenty-third or thirtieth of April. So we also brought the Mondays, like the twenty-second, twenty-ninth. Just throw me out there. I don't, I don't love it. I mean, part of me would like to see this happen in the next couple of weeks and then, uh, you know, actually change it for this year, but.
Do we actually have it gonna happen?
That being pretty young.
But I feel like if you don't do it expediently, the, the conversation will lapse, is sort of what happens.
Yeah, yeah, it seems like a decent balance.
Yep.
Uh, we'll do what we need to do and.
And I'm envisioning it of one participant from each town. Like, I have no objection to others who come in too, but I'm just thinking like, when, at the end of the day, if you have twenty people, it gets pretty unreal.
Mm-hmm.
Whereas six people, I, I'm guessing Barrington won't show, but I would be happy if they did because they deserve to have a voice too. Um, six people is a little more manageable.
Mm-hmm.
Or seven, if I'm assuming S B A would wanna come.
Um, I mean, in the case of one person, it could really be whenever. I, I throw out the Tuesdays because of, uh.
S B A?
Yeah.
And I was thinking that if I'm going to it and we're not doing it as a whole board, then it would make more sense not to do that, so that. Right, so just, just go there again, not the message.
So I, then in that case, do you wanna just choose dates and times that work for you? And then if we end up doing a full, uh.
Coming back for the board?
Yeah, you know, we could potentially, in the evening, I'm free. Or can make myself free.
Uh, what about April, Monday, April fifteenth?
That's how I'm gonna meet. I'm gonna throw that out there. If we do it one hour a form, we're gonna just post it.
Which town, does any town have an S B A meeting on Monday?
I think most are Monday or Tuesday.
Okay, so is it better to do Wednesday, April seventeenth then?
Uh, well, the one thought I had was just if you put it on a select word meeting and select words wanna come, then we.
Come as a whole select word?
Yeah, I mean, it's, I think it's tricky to try to say when no one else has any meetings, but I think almost everyone's Monday or Tuesday.
So then if we put it on a Wednesday?
Then you shouldn't.
Right, then I shouldn't run into that. Wednesday, April seventeenth? Um, I mean, I guess, I, I personally like to be in the room with the people, but you might get better attendance if we offer both platforms. Yeah. Yeah, let's do that. I mean, I think it's better when people are physically there when you're gonna have a difficult conversation, but I'd rather have someone present even remotely than not present at all. Um, what time should we say? Six? I mean, you know, in the end, you gotta, like, if you give them multiple days, it just becomes a nightmare with six thirty or seven. We should definitely C C S B A with this as well. Okay. Do you wanna see it? You often ask, so I thought I'd come. Pardon? You often ask, so I thought I'd come. Let's get on that. I heard enough of this, so it's.
All right, so.
Thank you.
We'll sign that. I think there's no opposition. Okay, fine. Next up. Next up is the transfer station recommendations. Transfer station recommendations. Which is essentially, as I say, a different increase in all of our themes because our expenses are increasing.
Yep, that very much sums it up. Um, I'm trying to think if there's any, oh, um, so we were, we had an unsolicited solicitation, uh, from a company called Waste Zero, which appears to be a consulting firm. We're not really sure, saying they would help us ascertain if P A Y T would be a good choice for us, so. We're gonna set up it with them. I don't see any harm in it, like, I don't.
No harm, okay.
Well, I don't really understand how they make their, their money and their brand, perhaps a tiny bit suspicious, but there's no harm in listening to what they say and, you know, and be carrying them out, perhaps.
They usually become brokers when you finish. More broadly, what they're looking for.
Brokers of your trash?
Is there a paper, anything metal recycling there?
Hmm, the base is South Carolina.
Yeah, but there, a lot of them are national firms.
Hmm, well, I mean, I'll listen to their pitch and they seem to think we could have, we would have a huge increase in this cycling. I, I have my doubts about that.
They might not know what you're walking into.
Exactly. Um, and that might be true in a larger urban area, but I, or a place that hasn't had it before. But I don't think we would, we would see that particular result, but I do think we would see some changes in people's behavior. It's just not clear how much or what exactly. Um, are you guys feeling okay with the recommended changes?
Yeah, uh, the, my one question is about the seventy-two thousand figure.
Oh, um, so, okay, so I was trying to come up with a, I, I think I was using the standard for P A Y T as the division, which, and you can make an argument for a lot of other ways to do it, but I had to start from somewhere. So basically, the way a lot of places do it when they have a pay-as-you-throw system is they have the sticker cost is the fixed cost of running an operation, so.
I see.
Salaries and operational budget, and the bag cost is what it costs to actually dispose of the trash. So, um, basically transportation and typically.
So the seventy-two would be, we run the transfer station, but no one ever, we never pay Roger to go and dump that full camp.
Correct.
Okay, so the seventy-two is the staff, I think that kinda makes sense.
Lights.
Staff, lights, rentals.
Well, stuff, yeah.
Yeah.
The, the camp, but not the dumping.
Correct.
So at the current rate, we're, we're still not even, and I don't want to, but just to clarify, we're not covering the fixed costs. So basically what we're kind of doing is with the sticker fee, we're finding the fixed costs and then all of the trash removal and dumping is paid for by the tax base.
I mean, realistically, right now, the tax base actually covers the whole thing.
Yeah.
And the rest ends up in free cash. Um, you know, and I, I, you know, we've all been okay with that, but that's literally how it works, right? We have to cover the entire cost because it's not an enterprise fund, and I would not suggest an enterprise fund for this. I, I agree with you that it's a public good, right? So I don't have a problem with that. But I do think that people pay more attention when they see a direct relationship between their behavior and, and what they're paying and have a clear contact of what the costs are involved. I mean, that's why P A Y T pay-as-you-throw typically alters more people's behavior. It will never alter everyone's, right? There's always gonna be the people that drive the Range Rovers because they don't care what it costs, even though they have no need for a Range Rover vehicle, which has, you know, was originally designed for a purpose that it, or they are going to use for. Like, they, these people don't need to be driving tanks. They just don't. So I, at, at least you're starting to make a connection between the use of the resource and what that resource costs. Um, and encouraging people to divert more from their trash with pay-as-you-throw. This isn't really pay-as-you-throw, but I needed something to base that sticker price on.
Well, I, I understand your logic and page.
Are there any questions?
What, what is the sticker fee base?
It's currently ninety, and we would be raising it to one twenty, and just for comparison, um, Gisella, who actually takes your calls when you call, which is one thing in their favor, even though it's not local, um, is between three sixty and four eighty a year for household trash, depending on whether you get pickup once a week or every other week. So for three sixty, you can get service every other week.
That's how the sticker price will be?
One twenty.
One twenty, but it's, it's basically the same setup we had before.
Yes, we're not actually changing anything, but there's the price.
I, I, because I, I personally think it works because people can afford that and not, they're not gonna dump it on the side of the street.
That's what I want.
Like, I want everything to go there. My taxes can be a little higher, but everybody at least is keeping things cleaner.
And, um, some of the, uh, some of the big item costs went up because, again, like mattresses are going from twenty to thirty-five because we can't, it's costing us thirty-five to get them all. Actually, thirty-five will be our good price if we can get it for thirty-five. We did debate, um, doing away with the bulkies, but, you know, they, they have this letter in front of them. But, um, it, it costs about fifteen grand, we estimate, for F Y twenty-five to take bulky items. But, um, I thought Jim made a really valid argument that he's, um, because of the changes in rigid plastic, what you can throw out, what you can, a lot of stuff that we like to believe can be recycled, like old plages, we can't. So if we don't take bulkies, we could just be telling people to take it to Lenox Dale, to the Gisella.
At home.
Um, but that's what we're concerned of.
You can, you can dump them on the side of the road.
Or they'll break things up into pieces and try to put it in municipal solid waste, and we think it's just better to have a slightly higher fee and whatever.
And, and just.
Yeah.
Yeah. Make it easy for people to.
Do the right.
Put it in the right place.
Yeah. And they might still, because they don't wanna pay anything for it.
But you don't, you don't see much on the side of the roads anymore. Happily not. Yeah, so it's, I don't think people are looking at things differently, but, you know, it makes it reasonable. I can go to the dump and I can take everything there. And so I have to walk some over there and some over there. That's fine.
Oh, and the only other thing that I think we're looking to do and we're trying to figure out the best way to do it is to start encouraging, like, right now, we're not taking things in a swap shop that are plug-inable.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but there's this thing called FreeCycle that's really accessible. You can post things up there. Um, I'm trying to see if I can convince Jim to let us, let people use, um, the transfer station as a pickup spot for people who are. Because FreeCycle, you put it up there and people can come get it, right? It's sort of just posting stuff. And there's Great Barrington and Sheffield and Pittsfield that all have them. Um, it's very easy to post up there and people frequently do. I've been watching things change. But there are people who would be nervous about, like, you know, it's a fridge, you're not gonna cart it around. But if it's a smaller thing, you might feel like you didn't really want someone coming to your house. So I'm trying to figure out if there's a way we could allow the transfer station to be used as a, an exchange site so people wouldn't have to meet someone at their house.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but also just to try to encourage people, if they're getting rid of something that's perfectly good, this is another way to do it besides just posting on the Google group because it has a wider, a wider view.
Mm-hmm. All right, well, I'm in favor of the, of the new basis of.
Sorry, Chris.
All right, uh, I'll move to accept the proposed prices for the transfer station recommended from the transfer station committee.
I second that.
There's seconds. Is there any other discussion or comment? We'll call a vote.
Yes.
Yes.
And yes, so that's the unanimous approval.
Thank you, Susan.
Yeah, thank you.
And thank you, Jonathan.
Yes, so next up is a fire company lease.
Okay. Susan didn't mean to ask.
So basically. As you, as per usual, I'm refusing myself because of the potential.
Right. Uh, this is more information, anyway. So what, we, we met the other morning and we agreed that we would work on a one-year lease contract. The, um, proposed contract that came up, uh, last week, uh, we discussed it yesterday morning in that meeting. I told him I didn't agree with that. It was, um, it's all in there, it's fixing capital with the lease agreement. Quote a paragraph out of it what the lawyer recommended. Um, I'm anticipating a talk to Kevin this early afternoon. He said in the next twenty-four hours, they're gonna, the Monterey Fire Company will come back with a recommended amount, what they need for lease. And that we would continue our meetings and we'd do a lease for this fiscal twenty twenty-five. But we continue to meet after we get that done for a fiscal long-term twenty twenty-six contract. And the issue is, you know, part of it is, what I put in here, they need help and we need to help them. We have to figure out a plan how to help them, you know? There's a lot of details and stuff like that, but I wasn't gonna get any deep into that tonight, just so we give you a, a break. Here's where we're at right now.
It, it would be good ultimately to really, I mean, I just feel like everything seems very squishy and I totally get that that's part of the process. Like, not being critical, but we're getting to the point where I sort of feel like I'd like both sides to have something in writing about what they think that number represents and how it would work so that we can be clear as to whether everybody has the same idea. I don't wanna get to that final step and there's some misunderstanding from along the way and everything blows up. I hate it.
Okay, there's, there's, you know, in the lease agreement that we do in twenty twenty-five, there's ninety thousand dollars in there. Sean says he can do the capital improvements with that money. Okay, this, this will be. So he said yesterday, yes, I can get it done. There would be an amendment, there'd be a very simple amendment in the lease agreement. This would be the capital improvement. Here's, here, here's the amount. Here's the work being done. They, we write a check out of the warrant to the. Here's, here, here's the email, here's the work being done. They, we write a check out of the warrant to the fire company, fire company.
And we, we definitely have in writing something from council saying that the whole issue of.
Prevailing wage, we have an email for that. That was given to me in October. The department, he talked to someone, he exchanged emails with the person from the Department of Labor.
Okay.
That says that, and it, it's, it, uh, says that you can do it. If it's in the lease agreement, they do the work, and they don't have to be there.
Oh, and you sent us that, cause.
I sent that probably the first week of October. I thought in the emails, that, that was done back in the fall, you know, August, we were, but I'll, I'll find it, but I'll send it.
Just 'cause, I mean, I'm uncomfortable if it's the one that I read. To me, it didn't really clearly state that there would be no potential liability for either parties.
All right, I'll have to go back and read. I have another one.
The only two I have for you, just were raising the question and didn't have the answer.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
But you, you may have sent it, and like, search doesn't always find it, or maybe you didn't use specifically the word prevailing wage in there, but.
But it goes back, it's, uh, that was, I'll, I'll send it actually. I, I, I'll get it back and send it back out.
Okay.
All right. If, are we done with that? Oh, you don't? Okay. So, number five is Crunk Road. So, I think, you know, Brian sent, I think everybody.
I saw his email. I thought it was a dating email.
The situation, um. And there's not too much to discuss. People have complained about speed on various roads.
But part of it's the whole Hume thing, and then late this afternoon, Melissa sent out the demand with a plan for the property, site plan.
Yeah.
Do we invite them then to talk about it? I mean, I think Karen raises some good questions, but I know it'll take a while to get it to happen, but we say, okay, you have this plan, you wanna share it, can you come answer questions from the citizen? I mean, they adults know it if you don't ask.
No, they wanna mend relationships. I've seen on a few occasions the director now and ago, and I also met briefly the, uh, I don't know the right term, but it was like executive director from California a few months ago, and they do want to mend relations with the community, um, after the lawsuit. Um, for what it's worth, I think they're probably open to doing something like that, whether or not it makes people, whether or not it makes the situation better. I, I can't tell you, but I think that they're open to something like that.
You gotta talk.
Um.
People can come to their own conclusions, but to sit there and have just a drawing or a little more information, that's just.
Well, the hearing's always an open hearing. People can always go with, but.
I know, it is.
The site planner, yeah.
Yeah, the site planner, but I can, you know, come in here, you know, you can do that, but separately, this planning board's gonna have their own agenda, but we can say, this is what we plan to do with the property. Uh, Karen in her email, you know, it's gonna be, you know, twelve RVs every week, or, you know, a hundred.
Good question.
It's, it's a fair question, too, as road-wise, it concerns them.
It, it certainly does.
You know.
Well, and, you know, I, I did have a conversation with Jim about whether we could even put a, a weight on the road, but, and, and it's not really, you know, for a bunch of different reasons that I, that we didn't.
When you take a look, to me, based on what I see, it's gonna be our, you know, it's shaped like a U, but, you know, six one side and six the other, oh.
Oh, you mean on the site, but, yeah. So, but are, what would be our next steps forward? I mean, part, part of what we don't wanna do also is we already
went to court over the same subject.
I don't know if you can go to court, but I think that as a citizen, you can tell them what to do. There's a lot of ways our hands are locked. But I think they gotta talk about it. Maybe they can, you know, do something. I don't know what, but if you don't talk about it, then it just smoulders, it just. See, they're gonna hear what, you know, they're probably gonna hear things they don't wanna hear, but you give them an opportunity to question. It gives them the opportunity to say, well, maybe I can do this.
So should we propose a select board meeting where Hume or its representatives are present, or should we suggest to them and propose to them that they hold, hold their own meeting similar to the ones that Camp Kamama held? Does the select board have any role?
We don't have any role in, but we don't, the only thing, our role is we represent the residents. You know, that's what we're elected to do.
We can also, if we were to have.
And I think if you had it in your select board, you can have a little bit of, uh, you know, okay, let them do their presentations, let's take questions and answers, can we get questions beforehand, so they can try to answer them in the presentation. There's just a little, you know, half dozen little things you probably, you can probably do to make it done. I, there's, I, I legally, I don't know what we can do. We probably can't, you know, but you, if you don't give people opportunity, they may walk away and say, we can do this for the community.
So do you, you wanna be at a select board meeting? You wanna be at a select board meeting?
I wouldn't mind it being a select board.
We'll do it as a select board.
I think the one, um, interest that's very direct that the select board has on behalf of the town is the road and the traffic on the road and the level of traffic on the road. Their vision is, it, 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 the question is really, do they envision substantial increases in the summer population there from what it has been? And do they, you know, what impact is that traffic and that, um, pe- person load gonna have on the road and its maintenance?
They did answer that in the, in the site plan.
Right, but I think that this is an opportunity for us to say, how is, you know, what is that gonna end up doing to the town's, um, maintenance of that road, and what would they be willing to do to, since that.
Well, that's a good point.
You know, what are they willing to do to see to the upkeep and maintenance of the roads that they are the primary, um.
But, now, I think that it really increases, you know, an RV, you don't come in moving with one person, you know, there could be three or four in the capacity of the number of people up there, you know.
And, and they're trundling in, those things are big, they're heavy, and the more people that are up there, the more load all of the food trucks and soda trucks are carrying.
And it gets a lot, you know, it's a lot of that.
Yeah, exactly. It's just a lot more people and a lot more traffic and a lot more weight, and that road was not designed for it.
Mm-hmm, that's true. Well, one thing is, though, there's already a lot of people using it. They do these camps, or they either let people use the site or host people all throughout the winter, and they're doing it right now.
Really? I didn't realize there was that much traffic.
I didn't know that either, but I was speaking to the director a few weeks back, and he was saying that, and it's like, part, part of it is, are, so much already goes on that people may or may not know.
Right.
And I guess it affects a limited number of people.
But, you know, using the, uh, what is it, Old Chestnut Hill Road, the one, you know, that's really limited to cars, isn't it?
Chestnut Hill Road?
Yeah.
Um, it's closed in the winter.
I know it's closed in the winter, but I thought Jake said that a bus went on its side one time up there or something.
Wouldn't surprise me. I wouldn't wanna go up there with a big vehicle.
Um, I do think trucks drive it.
Oh, really? Up there during the summer?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Maybe not preferably, but.
Well, it'd be nice if they.
Easier access.
But, yeah, they can drive it.
So, I mean, and I don't blame them. If you've got a resource, you'd ra, I, I think it makes sense to use that facility if you can, year-round, because then you're getting, you know, it's being used. Things often don't like not being used, right? If you have a facility, you just get rodents and degradation when it's in disuse. Uh, the flip side of that is, though, more traffic, more people, more wear and tear on the roads and our, and the town's facilities, and they don't even pay pilot.
Well, we can, we can begin that discussion. I think that's, that's the idea is, here is beginning, beginning that discussion. So I will reach out, uh, and just touch base with the director and say that we wanna schedule them in sometime, and, you know, just begin that discussion. I think at, right after the lawsuit, we kind of discussed asking for some things, but we felt it might be inappropriate, given the timing. Maybe now is a little more appropriate. So, um, we'll begin that, to open that line of conversation. Um, and we'll thank Brian for, um, what he's doing as far as the speeding.
I haven't been watching it, but really well.
Um.
It's interesting that there aren't complaints, that, like, people notice people speeding, but I'll admit that I've seen people bombing down the road, right? Like, especially, like, this'll sound weird, but I think it's often people, right? Because, like, the times of day that it's happening and their pickup trucks. So I'm pretty sure that's what it is, but they're, you know, it's hard, it's not like that greater, like, I, I've seen people get fifty down.
Eileen, you're not on mute.
Um, you know, I'm, I'm glad he's looking at you.
Um, yeah, so we'll, we'll reach out to Hume and, uh, let them know. Um, annual time meeting warrant articles, so there's a couple. We don't need to make decisions tonight, but it's good to begin the discussion. As far as the recall special act, I would think that what we would just propose would be not what was proposed last time at the town meeting, but how it looked after the amendments. I believe that's what we have in front of us.
Okay.
Um.
Do you remember that, that the amendments are the ones that Sean had here? There, there are some.
Yeah, no, that's the one, the first one.
Yeah, Lake Garfield.
Lake Garfield taxes.
Oh, okay.
Um.
Are they, are they open?
And to some degree, if we're proposing on the basis that, um, it passed town meeting and, and it just was hung up procedurally, then to some degree, maybe we don't even really rethink if this is how we wanna propose it, because we should just re-propose it how it was passed.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
So are there any?
And it was, I, I think the AG accepted it, okay, it's just, or did it not go to the AG, it just went to the, it just went to, to, uh, State House?
I don't, I don't think they asked for the AG.
It just goes directly to the state. Okay.
I would just make, Melissa, can you please send me a word of, of this if I don't have it?
What's the?
The only change I would make is basically catalyzation, if we're gonna spell out numbers, be consistent.
Seven, seven, twenty-one, twenty-five, five, wait, where are you depicted?
Sixty, ninety, a hundred.
Oh, gosh, of the days.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, and then town park is sometimes catalyzed, sometimes not. I guess it should just always be, and yeah, we can just propose that. Are there any questions on that?
No.
Okay. Um.
Excuse me.
Yes, Laura.
I'm, I'm sorry, I had one second.
Sorry, I didn't see you there.
Uh, that's okay. I, um, we're having a meeting with Alex from Hume on Thursday with the planning board. So.
Yeah.
I was wondering, with the conversation that you just had, would that, would there, should, should we ask any specific questions to kind of give you more answers to what you're thinking about as far as the road?
Well, and I think this is something that Alex has expressed before to Donna.
Okay.
Is that Hume does wanna mend the relationship with, with the town and its neighbors.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm very aware of that, and the question is, at this point, um, what that might look like.
Okay.
So I assume they're gonna have the same position that they had before, that they're open to, you know, doing something to help with the road and be a good neighbor.
Right.
But then concretely, does that mean, does that look like a pilot that they're giving money that help goes toward, goes toward the road? Does it look like a, like, recontinuing payment each year or one-time payment to kind of spruce the road and the drainage up? I know at one point, Jim had put together a few very rough estimates of what, how money could be used to spruce up, um, Crunk Road.
Mm-hmm.
And what commitment are they willing to make? I mean, if they're open about, you know, some kind of financial commitment or other in-kind commitment that they're willing to make, um, then that's great. I don't know.
Well, I think we can ask the question, we can ask the question as, you know, okay, we, we, we know that we have to approve this anyway because of the, um, the, uh, court, but if we could ask them, like, if anyone has any questions, and we bring up the, the, the road and see what they have to say. You know, not saying you have to do it or whatever, but just neighborly say, well, you know, the road's gonna be used a lot. Is there anything we can work together on?
Yeah, and, and then the, the kind of the question is, is it a one-time project or a recurring?
Okay. Okay.
And I think that the, to some degree accommodate both.
Sounds good.
The other, the other issue is, you know, Karen has written a note about how often they'll be going in and out, because it's RVs, I think it's, you know, twelve RV, RV parking spaces.
Correct.
Is that weekly? You know, so trying, they're, you know, the neighbors would like to get some idea of the number, how often is this gonna happen?
I would, I would get the traffic on the road.
We can ask those questions, because that's, this is what the meeting is for, is to ask questions, and then we can get back to you on, if we get any answers that would be relevant to what we're talking about right now.
Thank you, Laura.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Hey, Eileen?
Yeah, um, not to, I just wanna, can you hear me? Very noisy.
Yeah.
I just wanna introduce the idea also, when you're talking about the road, and I don't have numbers, but would they be willing to consider neighborly as a, a payment in lieu of taxes? Who farm makes one? I don't know all the numbers, but since they don't pay taxes, and I think the number, Frank or Susan, correct me if I'm wrong, is thirty-three percent of our land is nonprofits or, um, Hume, so it's exempt from taxes. That's really what puts a burden on us with the road and the cost. So are they willing to think about a recurring thing? And we can think about how to ask that, but I think that's really the big question. You know, we support them, they're friendly, but monetarily, they're really not supporting the town.
Yeah, that's certainly a direction we've discussed heading. Yeah, so then, uh, to jump back to the agenda, um, is the Lake Garfield tax district. Um, if that's something that we're interested in, we can just run it by town council, um, and see if there's anything else we need to do other than put on the town meeting.
So my, my only question is, for this to succeed, the folks around the lake who would have to accept the district are gonna have to be, there's gonna have to be enough sort of force of will for them to rally around it and get it done, otherwise we're gonna void it at town meeting, and it's gonna tank. So my question is, do we have any way to get, like, a any kind of read on that?
Um, the friends like Garfield supports it.
Okay.
They proposed it before. The wind is kind of out of their sails for a few reasons. One, it passed town meeting, and then it didn't move forward because of a procedural clerical issue. And I think it's been, since that, you know, thrown around a lot without much, uh, effort behind the talk. So that being said, if we propose it to town meeting, I think that friends like Garfield and similar are in support of it, and they're willing to get behind it. Um, it's just, they don't wanna bring it up as a citizen position.
Got you.
So if we think it's a good idea, we'll never really know, but if we think that it's generally a good idea, I think we should propose it to town meeting, and we can lobby for it, and they can also hopefully take it from there. Um, if we can get it passed town meeting, I feel like we've done our part. Um, if, you know.
Especially if we avoid the procedural issue.
Yeah, if it's ultimately, um,
Who dropped the ball on that one?
It, I don't know exactly, it's, it, it's, you know, there's not ne- necessarily a clear answer, and, and I just don't know the history, but.
Is there anyone we could tap to put something in the news prior to town meeting?
Yeah.
Talk about it?
Yeah, Michael Jermaine.
Okay.
Well, probably, um, but he doesn't wanna do it since petition for it.
No, no, I, I didn't mean that, I just mean because like I, I think that it's good to prep people and to let them know it's gonna be on and not just have it appear on the warrant. But have something in addition to that to talk about why it's there and what it will mean and why it's a good thing and why you should vote for it or not vote for it. Like, we're putting it on there, so we're gonna say vote for it, but.
So the biggest reasons that people would vote for it is because they would say that it's a more fair way of paying for. What we do to maintain the lake's health and that the people who live. Next to lake benefit more from it being there, whether it's recreationally or from the value of the property. There, and so that it's just a more fair and equitable way to pay for what we do, um, in the lake. The people who are against it in general, I think the general arguments against the tax district. Are that everyone can benefit from the lake, whether they live in the tax district or not, they can go to the beach, they can launch their kayaks or boats there. Um, and the whole town benefits from it, which is also true, and then one of the reasons that people don't like it is they feel like. The town will lose control over herbicides being used in the lake, which is somewhat. Uh, from what I understand. Not really accurate to what's going on, as I understand it, as Michael's explained it to me, assuming that all this information's correct. Um. Even friends like Garfield could go and put herbicides in the lake if they went through the procedures. The town, it doesn't need to be the town that does it. Um, that state. Um, it's state water, right? So, because it's a great pond, so the town could go down putting herbicides in the lake and friends of like Garfield or an individual could potentially go through the proper steps. And put herbicides in the lake, so there's no foolproof way to prevent herbicides, that being said, every couple of years. There's a citizen petition. Um, to town meeting that kind of denounces the use of herbicides in the lake, it always passes overwhelmingly. So, I don't think the Lake Garfield Tax District is gonna change that, but the concern is that if it's the just now, the Lake Garfield Tax District voting on it instead of town meeting. It'd be more likely to have an interaction of herbicides and other things that could be harmful to swimmers or other people using the lake and water. Well water and whatnot around the lake, so that is one of the concerns.
Right.
Just so we can kind of prepare for what the discussion might look like.
So I, I think we should send it to council, make sure it looks okay. Go ahead and put it on there.
All right, we'll do that, we'll plan on having both the recall special act and the Lake Garfield Tax District on the town meeting warrant. Um. Yeah, we still have a few minutes, so health insurance renewal and then. If any other time to ensure your items.
Two point five two percent increase.
Pretty low.
Yes.
That's good to hear.
There's no opposition to the two point five two percent.
Well, we could, but it wouldn't really change anything, so, I mean, it's, it's insurance or no insurance, so I don't think opposing it will do a count.
All right, so there's general consensus in support of the health insurance renewal.
Then I, um, just one other item is that the police department received a one thousand dollar donation, I just need to. To accept.
I, I love that this happens. Um, yes, let us, I know to accept the one thousand dollar donation to the police department.
Second motion.
All right, we call a vote on this donation. Is there any further discussion or public comment? There being none, we call a vote.
Yes.
And yeah, so that's unanimous approval, and thank you for the, for the generous donation to the police department to the anonymous donor.
Uh, Ron Rubin.
Ron Rubin?
Thank you, Ron Rubin.
Much appreciated.
Where's the other donor?
Um, without, if there's nothing else, we'll jump into the budget meeting with the finance committee and, um.
Can we walk if you don't want to jump?
Yeah. Time.
I wanna see a buddy hop.
I'm going to excuse myself for a minute.
Buddy lip.
I'm a old man walk.
All right.
Hello, my.
Hey, Jeff, I'm going. All right.
No, no, it's me, I just, I just had to leave. At some point in the day, I have to put it down, because if I go right to the last minute, I, I. So I did. Yeah, yeah, I got it.
I thought Stanley.
I'm sorry, I was down.
Frank's funnier, Frank is funnier, but Stanley, I like the, I mean, when I am Stan, I'm sorry, Stanley, what is that?
Stanley there?
You know, we catch him.
It's a long story, it's not, not time in the public meeting.
All right, I'm good for it.
You actually catch me another time.
Will do.
A cup of coffee will do it. Or talk to Lauren.
Are we talking Hi-Tes coffee or heat that?
Hi-Tes. Okay. Eileen, sir? Yep, Eileen.
Is there a conversation about debt service, was that all gonna be from? Cause I know here that it's like zero on the principal.
We were going, for which, which vehicle?
Well, just on all of it, cause like, were we, were we, was everything coming from, um, free cash or?
No, I thought we were gonna do minimum payments as part of the, uh. Operating budget.
Yep.
And then extra payments.
And then extra payments for free cash, Mickey, do you have a question?
Uh, you know, I just wanted to, I think that's why I'm here and, uh. You know, my standing on it, so.
A hundred thousand library principal. So the plan is to do a hundred thousand library principal, do you have the budget in front of you?
I have the budget right here.
Did it say something in the operating budget about seventy thousand to the library principal?
Yes, seventy thousand, ninety one dollars.
That's the minimum payment for the principal, uh, we have a special article where we're gonna allocate free cash. To, in the remaining balance to go up to a hundred thousand.
How is this presented to people so they know what you're doing, cause you have it down here, additional principal payments. Eight thousand dollars.
So there's gonna be, there's gonna be a special article that's gonna say, and we don't have it drafted up yet, but it's gonna say, we're gonna use. You know, a certain amount of free cash, um, toward principal payments on debt.
In the, in the following amounts, right?
And then there should be a table, and the reason why we're doing that is because we have free cash available to make these extra payments. Um, we're trying to keep the tax rate low, but also we wanna chop away at all of our debts more than we have to, including the library. Um, and so that's the reason for doing it, if we put it in the operating budget the way it is, that's just more tax money when we have the free cash available to fund it. And we're actually paying above and beyond on, on virtually every debt that we have.
With all of retiring as much of the, the principles we can before we have to start carrying the.
I mean, going back to when we first got these, this library loan. It was agreed by the finance committee, it was as recently as twenty twenty-two, I think June. Where a spreadsheet showed that it would be a hundred thousand dollars per year, it was never that we're gonna pay the minimum.
It is a hundred thousand dollars per year this year, it's the minimum.
Yes, I know, but you're, you're now asking people, say, oh, so you wanna vote on this or not? Instead of saying this is the debt principal, I, I just, I, I, I personally don't like the approach.
Okay, so the whole.
I think it's kind of. Insulting.
Insulting?
I, I think it's insulting to what the library has done. We are absolutely overwhelmed and happy about the fact that the town has. Taken this on and we have this wonderful building and everything, but I think we're getting back and I gave you a spreadsheet which shows that. The library has paid down a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars on that loan. We paid down a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars directly towards that loan, which happens to be, would be the last money you pay, in other words, we've cut. Cut you short by over a year, year and quarter of payments.
Mm-hmm.
And what you save, what we give you in interest on that, I gave you these papers months ago, I can give them back to you. Uh, and I just want, I just want the respect, that's all.
All right, but here's the part, like, like, I'm not sure we made this clear, um, the budget. The operating budget was coming in over a ten percent increase and. In order to bring it down, we wanna use free cash to accomplish that goal instead of raising and appropriating. So, no one is saying, we, we all are still agreed that we very much like to significantly impact. The debt on all of the outstanding loans, so we're continuing to do that, the only reason we divided it. Was to try to bring down the operating budget to a more manageable level, so we don't have to raise people's taxes, but we still get to pay down the debt. That's the goal, so the payments are divided in that way specifically. Because we're not really, I'm, I'm not really comfortable and I think that there's been other people, um, the finance committee and the select board expressing that. We got into trouble a couple of years ago because of the huge free cash applied to the tax rate and that's why. We see some of the impact this year that we see, as well as the increased assessments, it's mostly coming from having used free cash to pay that down. Which artificially lowered it in one year and makes it pop up the following year, we wanna get out of that habit. But we do have that free cash that we can use to pay down the debt by separating out those two parts. We keep the operating expenses a little bit lower, but still get to use our free cash to pay down the debt, so that's why they're split, I don't know.
Can I, can I chime in?
Well, one second, Eileen, uh, so Mickey, part of the problem is the way you're seeing it on here is not how it's gonna show up on the town meeting warrant. There's no effort here to have it voted down, I think that there's six finance committee and select board members here. Who want to make these additional payments, we really value them for all of the debts that we have, okay? We were strapped to, to figure out how to do it without skyrocket, skyrocketing the tax rate. We're all gonna support it, it's gonna say likely, unless, and anyone can say if they disagree, it's gonna say the select board supports this article three to zero. The finance committee supports this article three to zero, it's gonna specifically list in a table what all the, each money is going to, so it'll say library to have a twenty-something thousand dollar figure next to it. And it's gonna be supported by all six of the finance committee and select board, um, and I think it's a. You know, we're, we're living up to that, we're, we're focusing on all our debts and we are finding a, a good way to do it, I think, so.
Okay, I, I'm. My friend, I will, I will definitely make him stand on the floor if there's any problem with it, I really will.
Mickey.
I know what you told me, I'm just telling you how I think.
I ju, yes, and, and.
One, okay, so one at a time, so Mickey's gonna finish and then Eileen has the floor to herself.
I just wanna say that I absolutely. Am so in favor of the fact that you have separated out the interest payment and the principal payment. Because the way to pay the debt has always been shown, it's, you don't understand what's happening. You know, the people, nobody knows what the thing caused, how much you paid down, what's left and what's going to interest, at least separating out the interest, uh, shows you that. Individually, so I, I think that's an excellent way to show it. Okay, Eileen, you can go, sorry.
Okay, um.
We lost you, Eileen, we can't.
You're on mute.
I want to make two points. Uh, not to reopen this, the first is that Mickey, even if the a hundred thousand was in the agrees and appropriate line. We would let people know that it's a minimum payment plus, we would be honest about that no matter what line it's in. So I think that that is one thing that needs to be said, we need transparency and we have to show the minimum, uh, debt and then what we're doing above and beyond. So I think that is important to know, I think we're just, that is exactly right, all six of us agree. I also wanna say that the finance committee will do a budget briefing and I will. The finance committee will do a budget briefing two weeks before town hall, uh, before the town meeting, all the materials will be on the town website. And this will be one of those explanations in there, as well as our policy about paying down all the debt now that we have money. To make sure that we, um, spend it down to keep the tax rate low and to make sure we have room for the new capital projects coming up. I also wanna say thank you to the library for showing the way of what the friends can do and how you've supported the town. It's amazing and we hope that other institutions like the fire department are able to raise that much and the community center, and we think that you have really. Had a tough task and it's helpful, but in no way. Mid pro quo for getting money because you give money, that's just not how the budget is structured. So I wanna be very clear, we love that you're contributing to the town and paying extra money and raising, but there are a lot of considerations that go into the budget. And the mandates that we have to meet.
And that hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars is only a portion of what we have.
Very, very.
Came back for one extra penny.
Well, it's, it's appreciated and I think when we all discussed it in the, the last couple of weeks, when we discussed this plan. We said how important it was because of what friends of library has done, that we would maintain that a hundred commitment and that was important to us and we, we are doing it, so.
It's always clear.
Please bear with us regarding the form.
All right, yeah, I just wanna make sure that it's, it's very clear and I know that that hundred is being paid. I'm not gonna be here for, till the end of the payments on this thing, so I wanna make sure it gets done right.
All right.
And we're just really committed to paying down the debt on all of our debts.
May I, may I ask a?
Just so you're clear.
Then I have a quick question, why was the tandem axle principle increased by thirty-five percent?
That's our next, again, so, just. So.
This whole thing is weird.
Um, so. I'm happy to put some money towards the tandem axle, we got, um, the explanation that. We need to, because we said it's automatically the five-year useful life. We need to pay a third of it, but shouldn't it really be a fifth?
So, it appears from reading that thing like four times. It appears that, you notice how like the first year you don't have to pay anything, there's no required payment, it appears that for all the examples he gives. It's the useful life minus two, so, because you're not expected to pay down anything in the first two years. But then you're expected to pay a third of that original originating amount each of the remaining three years of that five-year useful life. Which I would agree doesn't make any rational sense, I don't understand why that formula is used, I mean, to me, it. Either you should be paying down a fifth every year or, or you should be, have. Paid at least that much for some amount of years, but it makes no sense, I would think, oh, well, if it's three years and you owe ninety and there's three more years, you have to pay a third of it. But it appears that that's not the formula they use.
Three, the first two years of the pay off. What's that?
Um, you just have to pay interest for the first two years.
Just interest.
You only have to pay, there's nothing that's, you can't pay it in advance, like with a home mortgage where you could pay it any month. But when it goes to renew, if you've taken a one year, or if you took a five-year, you can, but if you're going to renew it after one year, you can, you can just. Pay that, only take a new one if you owed a hundred, you could take the new one for seventy, having paid off the other three.
So, let's say that it has a useful life of ten years.
But I don't know, we can change it now, we might have had to.
I thought it said this.
Yeah, she said.
You can change it, but.
We do change it now.
The, she said that the select board has a vote on it, that they can change it.
I'm, that the select board declare that the tandem axle dump truck has a useful life of ten years.
I second that.
Are there any other discussion or questions? Can't think of any, all right, that makes perfect sense to me, we'll call a vote on the motion.
Google, it says twenty, I, I. I.
Yes.
And yes, so that's a unanimous approval, the select board. The select board has said that the tandem axle dump truck has a useful life of ten years.
Which would mean we only had to pay what?
Well, this, this.
We don't even pay an eighth of the total two hundred. But I, I was going to say we should pay off the rest of it since there's three years that we're planning, we're planning to pay it off in three years. But we could do twenty and thirteen or something.
So the only question would be, should we do some of it through cash?
Right.
Meaning, should we do the minimum and then do the rest from free cash? So let's say that Susan's, your math is all squared away. Was it initially a two hundred thousand dollar note?
Yes.
So what's two hundred thousand divided by eight?
Twenty-five thousand.
Twenty-five thousand, so what if we make, assuming that this is all kosher, we do twenty-five in the principal? And how much is actually, on the operating budget, how much is actually left on the?
Ninety-eight, two ninety-nine, ninety-five.
Ninety-eight, what was this, though?
Ninety-eight, two ninety-nine, ninety-five.
So what if we pay another roughly twenty-five thousand so that that would be enough?
If we wanted to pay it off in three years, the total remaining, it would be thirty-two, seven, sixty-six, sixty-five per year. Would be, would pay it down to zero capital.
So should we do that in the principal and the operating budget? Or should we do twenty-five in the, in the operating budget and the additional seven, eight thousand?
Let's be consistent and do that.
So we're going to assume that our math is correct. And the twenty, the principal in the operating budget for the tandem axle is going to be twenty-five thousand.
Oh, it's the twenty-five K in the operating budget.
Right, so it would be that much for the other one.
That's what you're going to pay extra in principal, seven, seven, sixty-six?
Yeah, and so that will come from free cash along with all the other free cash.
The interest, right?
No, the seven thousand, seven hundred. That would.
Seven, seven, six, seven.
If you combine the principal, if you combine the principal and the, and the free cash, it's a third of the remaining debt. So if we keep it the same rate, it's three.
I understand your principle.
I just look like it's a twenty-five plus.
Sorry, I, I did a subtraction, so all I have left is the extra, so we do that plus twenty-five thousand.
What's the non-allocated available free cash that we have?
What it was before this was seventy thousand?
After the hundred.
After, a- after this, it will be like sixty-two thousand.
It said, no, um, because we already had on here additional principal payments of eighty-four, seven.
Yeah, I was including that.
Oh, uh.
This is going to be another seven on top of that.
Yes, it said, oh, right, because, again, right, right, right.
That's what we, that includes like thirty-six thousand.
You know, because we, we only had like sixty-six, we just because sixty-six was two.
Yeah, supposedly.
And we thought that that was required thing, we weren't going to add anything to that, that was already over a thirty.
We gotta, let's, let's, uh, do one at a time. So free cash, usually we like to leave free cash at thirty or forty thousand dollars. On July first, it becomes unavailable, it disappears until we certify it again in the fall. Like October, November.
It wasn't freed up, what changed?
Well, some, it depends on the year. But usually when I'm on the board, it was October, November. So there's no good reason to leave hundreds of thousands. It will come back in November, October, but I think in general, we try to leave forty.
I think this year we left twenty-seven, wasn't it?
Yeah, there was a little hiccup, but yeah, we left twenty-seven.
So after the truck, I mean, after the library and then after the truck, we have the, uh, making more than the, paying down principal, we'd still have it in the sixties is what you're saying.
Yeah, and what I would do if it were me is I would take the difference between what we're left with and what we want to leave in the account and put it against the more expensive highway truck. And so we're not taking all that out of stabilization, take some from free cash, some from stabilization, that's what I do. Because right now we have buying that a hundred ninety thousand dollar truck all out of stabilization. So if we take thirty thousand out of free cash, it's not as big of a stabilization. Hundred ninety thousand, it seems like a large hit to stabilization.
That's the mid-range wing truck.
Yeah. So that's what I would do, I would take roughly a hundred and sixty, based on these current numbers, a hundred and sixty from stabilization, thirty from free cash.
Yeah, because Russell needed two thirty-five for stabilization.
Yeah.
I'm sorry to break in, we're working off the free cash number of four thirty-four thousand, is that what we're doing?
Um, so four thirty-four was certified. Um, at, on Saturday's special town meeting, we already used fifty-one oh seven four. So.
So I don't know if the new budget is updated, I didn't get a chance to look at it, but that needs to be put in.
It's included.
It's been in there, Eileen.
Okay, so why am I, if it's in there, why am I at four thirty-four?
If you go all the way to the bottom of the fiscal year twenty-five draft budget, you'll see.
Of the four thirty-four, no.
You'll see the subtractions from it.
It's, it's like at the very bottom of the, um, draft.
I mean, I'm there, but I don't know why I don't see it. Four, oh, I see, fifty-one forty-five, fourth, so we're working on four sixteen.
No, we're working on three twelve, three fifteen.
We're not really, what do we have right now as of when the accounting goes in for the?
That's what I'm asking.
Well, no, that's what we're estimating to use at the ready balance. What we really have is three three, we have three three at our disposal.
Right, and I just don't see that number on the free cash tab, but maybe it's there.
Well, that's not how we have it in there. You can add it in equals, select the other one, minus, select the other one.
She's looking at the free cash.
Right, but we should see that number.
Hang on a second, free cash tab is only calculating how much free cash you have to use and where those funds came from. That's all that tab is for.
Did you have a comment, Eileen?
No.
Okay. So. What we are kind of back to is we have, I think it's roughly sixty-two thousand in free cash. I don't think we want to leave sixty-two thousand in free cash. I would take like thirty thousand and put it against the highway truck, that's a hundred and ninety.
Yeah, the wing truck.
The wing truck.
Just because high, the one tons listed is high.
Yeah.
So I'm just trying to make sure.
Um, that's what I would do.
So that we bring, with the goal of bringing the total remaining to about forty, is that where you're?
Yeah, that should be more than thirty.
Okay.
Just because right now our general stabilization is six sixty-five, a hundred ninety is a big hit off of that. A hundred and sixty is still a big hit off of that, but it leaves us with half a million.
So again, you're saying use one sixty, you'd split the, the wing truck.
Yeah, that's what I would do.
Between thirty-two.
Like one sixty out of stabilization and thirty up.
That's what I would do, I think it leaves you the right amount of free cash.
And just one other question, I, I thought there was a plan for the stabilization fund from Jim Hunt or someone, or there is not, there's still open questions there?
Well, we have a capital plan, but it doesn't always necessarily specify what's being spent from stabilization, what's being bought from free cash, what's being paid for as debt.
But he was using chapter ninety, was he using chapter ninety?
Well, he missed some chapter ninety.
Chapter ninety, some stabilization, it's a big chunk of stabilization in there though.
But chapter ninety and our general stabilization fund are two entirely different.
Right, but I'm just saying that there, there is a big chunk, it's going to be a spend down when we start those projects.
Okay. Um, if there's no opposition, we'll go ahead and change the budget to show thirty thousand in free cash going towards the mid-range wing truck and the other a hundred and sixty thousand coming out of stabilization.
I actually think it's a good idea.
Okay, there's no opposition.
I'm not.
All right, Melissa, please go ahead and change that. I don't know if it's going to be two separate articles or one, we'll figure it out.
Just listing the different amounts. I think it's more straightforward if you do one and just say both amounts right in there, right? Because then you're only, you're dealing with the whole issue.
I just don't know, because stabilization needs to, there's free cash needs majority, that's the only reason. But you're, you, it doesn't, you can't approve one or the other, so that's the details, we'll figure it out. If we did kind of jump right into debt service in part because Mickey's good question about what's going on with the principal payments. Um, hopefully, even if you don't agree, you understand now what we're doing.
Do we just sort of walk down from the top?
Yes, let's walk down from the top. So in the one hundreds, we have a remaining question about the audit, which is now going to cost roughly eighteen thousand five hundred. The other question is, should we use the money that we have in this year's budget, encumber it, and then only have to raise a thousand for the audit, or should we raise the whole eighteen-five? What do people think? We left last week that we'd come back.
I would encumber, I would take it from this year, but just because we're so hot.
I would too, with a footnote that exactly says that that, that needs to be a straight line moving forward.
Okay, so I think, because that, that will just flatten it out as we move forward. So there's a general consensus, the audit account is going to be one thousand in the line item. And we're gonna, we're gonna actually explore if we want to encumber or transfer.
I think you should transfer, I count only prefer that you transfer.
Okay, so we're going to have a special article where we transfer last year's funds to this coming fiscal year, but we're going to only raise one thousand in, in the operating budget.
All right, and then FY twenty-six, we'll put the eighteen thousand five.
Yeah.
Two million ounces.
Well, the seventeen-five was years ago.
I know, I'm hoping that it will, but.
So again, we just, so if we go to the finance, so that annual audit number is typically going to be a thousand.
Yes.
Okay.
Are there, is there anything else in the one hundreds that anyone feels like needs further discussion? Has anyone, I sent a couple of things about stipends. Has anyone changed their mind?
Well, because the library and I, we signed it, we talked about it, we could have a discussion about it.
We're ready.
All right. I'll speak for myself, uh, you know, we went back and forth on it, read the notes, which you did. But we think you're opening up when you start giving committee members a stipend or other committee members a stipend. I, I think it's problematic.
I guess, because only elected officials seem to get stipends, right?
Um, it's arbitrary already. I think the reason that the Board of Assessors, anyone correct me if I'm wrong, I think the reason the Board of Assessors and the Board of Health even get a stipend is because those were roles that were helped by the select board and then got split off into their own elected boards. Because there's many other elected boards like ZBA Planning Board that don't get a stipend. I think what's unique about assessors and Board of Health is they were under the select board umbrella and they got split off. It's already arbitrary.
CBA elected or appointed?
CBA is elected, planning board is elected, they don't get paid. Library trustees don't get paid.
So I have a few questions.
Yes, Eileen.
So it's not clear if we do a stipend that people will still take the job, that's our hypothesis. And then it's not clear if they take the stipend, how we're paying it, what if they don't do it, what if something happens? So, um, uh, I think this is the type of thing that, you know, the Division of Local Services comes in and does an analysis or can do. I know we might not have had a great experience with them in the past, but this would be a very discreet, I, a question that we could ask them. Maybe it's a staffing issue, maybe there could be more staff resources that help the board, so they have to do less homework. Maybe there are other things that people would rather have, because I think it was someone who said last week, it doesn't matter if you give me a thousand dollars, I hate to say no to my neighbor, I don't want to learn all the rules and regulations. So I think we really, I, I, I think it's just a hypothesis. And I don't know if anyone has gotten any data that says, yeah, I'll sit on the committee if I get a grant, if it will change anything.
No. Can I chime in, because I've been dealing with this for two years?
Almost three.
Well, yeah, in varying degrees. Um, as to the equality, I can understand the concern, why are we paying some and not others? It's pretty simple, we don't have trouble filling any other committee like this and it's not even close. We, a, a couple of years ago and maybe still this year, we have zero vacant elected positions. All of these other appointed boards and committees, we have many people who want to be on them. We don't have, this is, we just have trouble getting people to sit on, it's not even close. I think one reason to do the stipend unrelated to whether it will attract and retain people is just, it's a thank you for thankless work. And then as far as, um, get attracting and retaining, I think it's not about people feeling like they were adequately compensated as much as they feel they were thanked. So, and I would propose, because we have, we did have some numbers in that data that Melissa collected in my research.
Yeah, we researched that.
Um, I would propose you would put the line at thirty-five hundred and you have five hundred allotted for each potential member. Um, it's not a lot of money, but one option would be to split it among the members that are there. And the less people are there, the more they're rewarded for the work they do. And another option would be, it's just five hundred dollars for, you know, as a, just a thank you, like an honorarium. Thank you for the service. So that, that's my proposal would be put the line at thirty-five hundred. Um, if no one else wants to do it, we'll just, I'll drop it permanently.
My concern is this year, we've been nickel and diming people all over the place. And also we're going to throw thirty-five hundred dollars into a department that hasn't had any money there at all. And so may, maybe it's something to think about for next year.
Well, we're.
It's a possibility, see what happens.
Um, so I did talk to Chris Larry, he was going to come tonight, but he decided not to because he just, he can't devote the time to it. But him and I had a long conversation about it. He agreed that one of the things you guys should consider doing is dropping the membership from seven to five so that we're not trying to, the quorum will be smaller. And I, he really thinks you guys should give it a second thought about, um, appointing the people that are from another town if they are truly interested and, and possibly Kim as well, because she does serve as the agent, she could be a voting member.
But you can't even know she's a.
Yeah, she just has to file a petition so her, um, conflict of interest is squashed.
When you drop the member from seven to five, how would it have to join the?
There's a bylaw, so you just need to amend the bylaw to make it five. And then, you know, if you agree with Justin, it would be thirty-five hundred. I mean, when was the last time we had seven members? Never.
Never.
So I'm not, I'm all in favor of that, did Chris have a comment on a stipend?
Uh, he agreed with me that, you know, it's not going to get somebody to join the conservation commission.
Well, the other thing about stipend, how would it work? You know, what happens if you do it for four months and then they don't pay that sum up? Do you give them for every meeting, is it time, you know, renewal?
I think it would be one regardless of performance, it just keeps it simple. Is, is, is anyone else want to keep talking about this or we're done? We're done.
But I do, I do think we should.
Are, are boards right now, so you have to be assistant of Monterey to be a board?
No, we get preference, selected to do, not elected.
And conservation, the conservation commission is appointed, so theoretically, we could do it right off the bat.
Right, it's more complicated.
Yeah.
In a.
Everything's always complicated.
So it goes back.
To the municipality.
It goes back to this. We have many, many people who are not voters in Monterey, who are part-time residents, um, who serve on the cultural council, the community center committee, um, other appointed council on aging. I can't quote, now I'm going a little too deep where I can't actually say that for certain. But the select board is very open to appointing part-time residents who aren't voters in town to those positions. The request we had from the Concom was different yet, because it wasn't about part-time residents who aren't voters. It was about people who don't live in Monterey, who may not work in Monterey, who have no connection to Monterey, who just care about the work of the Concom and would come from Great Barrington where they live and work to serve on Monterey's Concom. And the select board at the time said that we weren't in favor of that.
I can actually see that because it puts, by having a part-time, even if they're part-time, it, they're committed to the area as opposed to somebody who, you know, might have some sort of other agenda coming in from outside of the community.
So is everyone certain?
Sorry, I get it.
All right, so the Concom stipend was never a line in the budget and it will no longer be one, so Melissa, please remove that. Is there anything else in the one hundreds?
How do we, uh, to change the membership from seven to five?
How do we change the membership from seven to five?
It's on my, it's on your list.
Just making sure.
The only thing in the 100s is $155,000 was the IT budget. It wasn't 40, but I have gotten a lower, I talked to John Shannon. And he does give a lower dollar value, but to a point that Melissa brought up is that he is, he is not part of the state contract. So it does complicate things, but I did talk to the, I have an emergency inspector general to ask him a question. About a, about having a current vendor and how that, and how that current vendor would work not being on the state contract. For the police department. He is for the police department. So he's a current vendor for the police department. So there may be some kind of workaround so that we can, we have to, I talked, because I talked to Convise today, I was working on some other stuff. And I sent them an email, they told me to talk to the Inspector General's office. So I left a message with the Inspector General's office, basically asking how, how things work. Because I have been in situations where we have had a vendor and gone to increase that vendor's work, which was above and beyond what is the cutoffs. And we didn't have to go out to bid because he was, the vendor was still the current vendor. They were state contract, it's just.
How much was the difference with what Shannon was up?
We were looking at dropping that 40 to 27,500.
What? That's a big drop.
Yeah, it's a totally different concept. It kind of goes back to what we'd originally talked about, that sort of phasing out the localized hardware. But that 27,500 is a mixture of scenarios. One where we would keep, the possibility of keeping that hardware local. Another possibility of removing the hardware local, which would effectively maybe even drop that more. So.
As much as the charges for support is drastically different.
So different.
And has the police department been satisfied with their support?
Have you heard anything? They seem to be okay with that.
I think he said his slower response sometimes, but other than that.
It's just him and three people, I think. So, it was like, I forget what their $2,800 was their annual service fee.
Which is the difference.
And is some of that 27,500 one-time upgrade cost?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so at first it would even drop way lower. Yeah, so if. Yeah, it would, it would, it would drop. Yeah, there are some initial dollars there that are one-time costs and those would go away and it would drop it down again, so. But my, my, my instinct, depending upon the scenario, would be to 27,500 for FY '25. And then depending upon which scenario we go, if we keep it, if we keep the server local, keeping the 27,500 in there for FY '26, because that's when we would replace the server. And then after that it would drop, it would be back to where we were again. And then possibly drop, you know, using some other type of mechanism five or six years out to buy the hardware again.
So let's just leave in our current number until we figure out a little bit more.
So leave the 40.
Yeah.
Yeah. I hope, I hope the call back comes from Inspector General tomorrow. When I find out, I'll pull up this email.
Done with 100s, any, anything else in 100s?
I did have a question about the town clerk's expenses, because I don't know, did it stay the same?
It went up by 50%.
Well, we had talked about, we didn't take out, it was gonna stay the same, but with the, with the actual training, it was just gonna stay the same.
We're not taking out the regional training.
It was gonna stay the 81.
200s.
Where are we with the police department on the lease? I mean, the fire department on the lease.
On the fire department on the lease. We, we had a meeting with them yesterday. And we're gonna do a one-year lease. And they're gonna come back with me in the next couple of days on what they proposed, that the lease, what their lease payment request will be. And then we'll take that and digest it. After we do the one-year lease, we'll start negotiating a lease for fiscal 2026, a longer-term lease. And what we're gonna try to do is, not try, we're gonna address how we can help them in their capital needs. And they're coming up with a capital plan that Chris is working on. I haven't seen it.
I mean, you know, we have those, at least two contracts, the tree contract with Don Field. And in the past, there's been one for the transfer station that, that was a, it was essentially a one-year contract with stipulated options for year two and year three. And in, at least in one of those examples, there were actually stated numbers for the other two years, although they were subject to change. But there's at least a history with contracts that had a clear number for one year and then something for the other two years and, you know.
So what are you expecting this $50,000?
I don't, I don't, I don't want to say, you want to give them a few days. Eileen, one other question, I had a handout, I'll email it to you.
Eileen.
I have another question. Okay, that sounds good on fire. When we met with the fire department, there was some question about other ways for them to raise revenue, which I understand is not in this budget meeting. But I really think they should meet with the friends of the library, is Mickey still there? Who were able to pay back $125,000 by raising money. So that might be a nice way for them to look at how the fundraising works and how come they're so successful, just an idea. And the other thing is, no, because they've been very successful and that's what they want to do. There was an issue raised about solar panels on the firehouse. Are we even thinking about?
No, we haven't had that discussion, because the last time I checked with Peter on the energy group, they have a consultant working on it. So I think we'll get into that discussion. What had happened is their chief negotiator, Kevin, had a family thing where he's had to be out of town for several weeks. And he's gonna have to go back out of town, so we got by on it. So I think that, our whole ideal is to keep talking to them, get the contracts done, regroup in the fall. You know, they've agreed to be very transparent on their financials. This is what we're spending, this is how we're doing it. And, you know, and keep the ongoing conversation.
Okay, yeah, I think that's a good plan.
I really want to see something in writing, because everything seems so vague. I know, it's gonna get there when it gets there. But we can't decide by council until it's.
Well, actually, the council has a proposed contract, which I haven't really looked at, but Kevin and I exchanged some of the wording and stuff like that.
Okay, and then I had a question on the, the fire inspection fees and the, I think the plumbing fees or the other license fees in here that, the camps or something that needed to be addressed.
The fees?
The fees or the stipend?
No, the inspection fees. There are inspection fees that aren't being charged, but like second and third visits to camps. That aren't, they keep on getting warnings and they're not getting, is that in there, Susan, remember that meeting?
But the vast majority of the fees go to the inspector, right? So it doesn't, horribly, I mean, what do we get, a few dollars per inspection?
Oh, okay.
Back to our budget.
Right, but with the fire.
I do know that at least the building inspector, we did actually go ahead and get permission to charge fines and set up all of that.
Yeah, and then Don gave me the law for the fire inspector, and I don't have it up right here, but I believe the re-inspection fee is not anywhere near what the actual inspection fee is. So he doesn't, he doesn't have the same things afforded to him as the plumbing, gas and electrical and building do.
Okay, did you catch that, Eileen? Fire, apparently for fire re-inspection, like if you fail, you don't, they don't have the same stipulations about additional fees that building, all of the building departments, plumbing, wiring, et cetera do. So that, the like punitive smackdown for being a bad citizen doesn't exist for fire the way it does for building.
Okay, just looking for a way to get more money.
On the compensation tab, or I'm not highly psyched anymore.
Are we doing, are we in the 200s?
It's still in the 100s.
No, that's fire department.
I have a question, can you, I know I've read something, can you explain the compensation line?
Yes, and I still don't have a 100% sign off on it, but. So, everything would remain the same as far as the duty shift go, other than it's going from 100 to 125. The calls would go from $25 an hour to 40 with a minimum of two hours. The training officers that had been proposed has been removed for fiscal, fiscal year '25. With the understanding that there will be an open discussion about it for fiscal year '26 and some figure will be added back in. I should back up to the duty shift as well. Right now, there's one staff proposed for weekends during the day. The discussion will also be fiscal year '26, that there will be two. Because they're hoping to, you know, have everything really take off by then and have enough staff that, that can cover. So as far as the housing retention stipend that originally was proposed at 20, 24, a person and for five people. Right now, we're going to put in, there's four people that are responding to all the calls regularly during the day. Two of them will get a $10,000 stipend. The other two, which are the chief and the assistant chief, would be added to the town's insurance.
The health insurance.
The health insurance.
And that value is what?
Well, that is about $23,000 a person.
And versus, what does the chief pay, the chief get anything or does he just get stipends now?
No, the chief and the assistant chief would just get the, the health insurance.
But right now, do they get anything? So that, okay. When the chief and the assistant chief, if they, and the two that are getting 10, I take it that's Dell and Mark, because those are other officers.
Yeah, the two.
Okay, do they become, they become paid employees? Do the, a job description come with it? Does, if we have to have like EEOC training, do they have to go to that? I mean, how does that work?
These would just be stipends, and they're already paid employees with what they get for the.
And they have titles, they've already had titles. So basically, it's a stipend for, for an officer duty.
But it was, a stipend was for going to an event.
No, it's a retention longevity recognition stipend.
That's what they get now.
No, that's what, they don't get any stipend right now.
Yeah, but so, but they are, they are an employee, but if they go to an event, they get some kind of compensation, right?
They get a fire call, some compensation.
Some compensation. But what I'm, I, you know, I'm just, but by doing this, this is more than a stipend, this is a flat, you know, the salary of the.
No, this would be on top of the call.
Yeah, I know it'd be on top of it, but this is, if they do no calls, and I'm not saying they're not, I mean, don't get me wrong. The chief and assistant chief are getting, their medical is being paid every month, it's more like they're in the olden age.
We've been showing Chris.
Yeah, and the other two, well, Chris and Dell too. No matter what they do, it's a salary position. How we spend the money, it's not giving them $1,000. How we spend the money is there, there, I, I just, I would think we would go to legal counsel if we do this. Are they considered an employee of the town?
They're already an employee of the town.
Yeah, but are they an employee? Let me finish, Eileen, you're starting to say, okay, now you're, you're basically saying the chief and the assistant chief are on a salary.
They're on a stipend.
No, they're on a salary, so no matter what they do, they get paid, their medical gets paid, which I'm not, I'm not a pro to that. I just feel like, do we need clarification on that? Do they, you know, if those guys are on a stipend up at the firehouse and, you know, we have some type of training, do we make the, the fire guy, you know, the firefighter come take a training? You're, I think you're crossing the line, they're like a salary and employee now.
Hang on a second, I'm just like a little aside here, I think it's raising the question of, is there a monetary compensation value passed which it changes the category of the employee? In other words, if we're covering their healthcare costs, does that put them into a different employment category from, you know, example?
Yeah.
If so, what?
So can you clarify that, because right now, we don't really have a different. Just clarify that for me, because I mean.
Like, we don't typically, right, part-time employees don't get benefits.
Right, but that's.
And I'm not suggesting they don't like this, I'm just saying it is a departure from existing policy. And what are the implications?
You need to ask, is there W2? You're, you're saying I'm gonna pay you for your medical, is that part gonna be, are they gonna have to pay federal or state taxes on that?
Right, can, can I?
Because you're not, you're not keeping with, it's a 20-hour minimum and you get health benefits. I'm not saying, no, but you gotta make a, you gotta, you gotta ask the accountant, you gotta ask the lawyer. Because they may get next year and say, oh, here's a W2 for $23,000 for your health benefit.
Yeah, there are two issues here that need to be addressed. One is.
Go for it, Eileen, you've been really patient.
No, because I think I understand this pretty well. There are two issues that need to be addressed that are being raised. One is usually benefits are tied to hours. We have a lot of part-time employees, we have to look at our sponsoring health plan or whatever it is. We must have some policy on it about how many hours you have to work to get benefits. Otherwise, you're opening a door for every part-time worker that even though we'd love to pay them, we can't afford to, to get health benefits. So we must make sure that wherever the, our, what is in our stated plan or a town policy or, you know, our, whatever, whatever document it's in, really complies with this. The second thing is exactly what Frank's saying. We do have to issue a statement to them, a C, something that they will get about their insurance coverage and they may be taxed on it. So that has to be explored as well. Because there are two big considerations here. Usually benefits are tied to hours and we don't want to open the door for, you know, they might have to be considered a special class. There might be some enabling thing the Select Board has to pass to make that happen.
So I think that's also a question for like an HR lawyer. In terms of what are the state's rules and regulations and laws around the provision of benefits to employees and part-time employees? And do we have an obligation once we open that door? Again, I'm not opposed to it either, I just think.
We need to know what the implications are. It must seem like it's a work council.
There is a general.
Well, don't pay for it yet, because like I said, I don't know if they're ever gonna sign off.
So it's unclear whether they're actually agreeing to this. So we don't even know.
It'd be an interesting question, you could say you're a part-time person 20 hours a week. Okay, now, their salary, we're not gonna, you know, I don't believe we're going around and say you're doing that, you know, but maybe that has to be stated and this is.
But we don't know that. And one of the things we need to get, and, and town council may or may not be the expert on it, I don't know.
Then you have an employee, there is someone at, at the firm that does.
Between the stipend and the salary. And stipend is usually considered as something kind of special, like you get a stipend for travel. You get a stipend maybe to cover certain expenses that you might have. Even living expenses, or somebody who gets a stipend for giving a presentation, a specific presentation. You know, the police chief gets the ability to go to San Francisco and speak to the Police Chief Association of America. And he needs travel expenses, he's not paying his travel expenses. And that's not in the budget.
That's not usually a stipend, I mean, that's usually a travel.
But he might get a stipend from then of $1,000.
For being a speaker.
For being the speaker or whatever. A salary is generally thought of as regular pay for work performed. And you also have health insurance, which is, which is part of your compensation package. And we need to be, as people have been saying, I think, I agree, we need to be very careful about that. No, it's not about opposition, but it's about, are we setting a precedent? And are we saying that if we're giving a significant piece? Significant piece of non-salary compensation, health insurance. Um, to one group of employees, do we need to give that to other group, to other employees who are of a similar standing? And does the state have particular rules and regulations around that?
Well, there are rules that anybody that works more than twenty hours consistently has to get it, and I would say that Sean would probably argue that he does work probably thirty hours at the fire.
Right, but it's not about argument, it's about documentation.
Right.
Yeah, I'm not, you know, we just need to make sure everything's lined up, that this is the way we go. Because, you know, I, I don't know, they may say you gotta give them a W two, I don't know, you know.
I'm not gonna put anyone's.
Even though I am.
I think we just wanna be sure.
Before we ask council, let's just make sure that, you know, we're getting money.
I would start with our HR people and ask them where we set up our work rules and benefits and classes of employees. We have a document somewhere that does that, that's the first step. And then it'll say what hours do you benefit out of, what classes of employees, and then they can tell us where to go next.
We already have the.
Could be a question.
Yeah, again, don't, don't send it to anybody who's.
No, I know, I'm not sending it anywhere, we're just.
They advised us to get the discussion.
And it, and it may be a question of how we.
I have a, I have a strong feeling it's gonna go the other way.
So, and it may be that it makes it simpler to call us and just. Do it that way, because then we don't have to worry about. Um, well, we were trying to, I know, I know why we were trying to do it, I remember. But I, you know, sometimes try to solve one problem, creates another one and you gotta pick the lesser. I, I don't think anybody doubts how much time the people we're talking about put in. Like, we want it to be clear what they are doing and to have documentation for it, but the reality is, we know that they've been putting in the time. We're trying to find a way to recognize that level of commitment, um, and the time it's taken away from the ability to earn their life.
It could be that HR says, look, you can give a, let's say about health insurance with five years.
If only.
That.
We wish.
Then you could give a five thousand dollar stipend that you see fit to whomever, and they then use it to buy the health insurance.
Right.
There, there may be a procedure that you have to follow to.
Accomplish the goal.
To accomplish the goal and for it to be aligned with state law and policy around the player.
Okay, um, are we down in the two hundreds? Any questions in the two hundreds? Three hundreds is education, are those numbers final?
No, I think that seven was there, right? It's more like.
So not final, but. Um, was there any expectation to that? Did you say it would go up or down?
Um, she did, but I cut in face of the email that she had sent, wanted to say, but there is a possibility, but I basically don't hold your breath.
Well, and it's not entirely out of our control, but.
It, it's only in our control to thumbs up, thumbs down it, and that would be something to the other town.
I mean, it could be in our control, they sent you go to that here.
Right.
Um, four hundreds?
But if it's being driven primarily by their insurance, I don't think you're gonna get much traction in there either. Right, four hundreds.
Four hundreds. Um, there was a question about cemetery. Um, Eileen, and I spoke briefly, it sounds like we're gonna keep that at twenty-two thousand five hundred as long as everyone's in agreement. It covers more than just the mowing, but there is tree work that needs to be done.
Uh, Michael will reach out to Jim after the cold weather, but he thinks if we keep him whole, he'll be okay with the tree.
Just back to the school, the hearing is tomorrow at five via Zoom.
Any other questions in the four hundreds? Five hundreds? Very little change.
Six months in the Perry death of this will be.
Six hundreds?
I'm wondering if the beach monitor can also do the con con duty, I'm joking, I'm joking.
How come the talks commission went down from twenty to one five?
So there's a little bit of moving around going on, kind of like the library, so the six hundreds hits really interesting. They're going down fifteen on mine six thirty park commission general, if you go down a couple lines to parks law maintenance, they're going up ten thousand three hundred and eighty. So, between those two, they are down about five. I wasn't at the budget hearing, but I get the sense that this parks commission has been at work for a few years. And they did a lot of kind of one-time projects this past year.
Okay, now.
That's a sense.
Anything to do with it?
That's the sense.
I, I don't think we're dealing with it in this budget, but the finance committee on its long-term, next year, has the issue of all the mowing contracts. And when they start, and who's doing what, and race, and just bringing some kind of order to that whole process, is that right, Roger and Jeff?
Well, what's the concern about the contracts, the mowing contracts, other than they cost too much money?
That's the concern, that we should look at what we're doing, we should look at the wraparound, if they're, if we are better off finding the mower and bringing it in-house. And having a full-time guy, we need to really look at what's the most efficient way to do this, or it, you know, moving forward. It might be what we're doing, but at least it deserves a little bit of a, a dive and a look see.
Okay, that's the six hundreds, unless there's any other comments?
Uh, seven hundreds, we discussed in depth previously. Um, we need to double check that that twenty-five for the tandem axle principle is.
Susan, Melissa.
Um.
We, yeah, we, basically, we need to make sure that if, that he's okay with our having change for the useful life.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure there's, but is, if, if they're okay, when they're okay with that.
And that it, it didn't retract.
If the twenty-five.
Right, right. I mean, it would all come down to whether what we in fact had to declare the useful life when at the onset of the law. He seemed to be implying otherwise, but given last year, I have less absolute clarity of his answers than I might.
Well, I have a question, why does it make no sense?
Because somebody crazy set the rules, like, what, so many of the things that from municipal side finance don't make a lot of sense.
No, this makes no sense.
I know.
I think that there's something more, because if it's, if it's a five-year useful life, you get two years, you don't. Shouldn't by the third year, you just have to have a third of it paid down or even three fits? Not you have to pay down a third regardless of if there's only. Well, this is two.
Well, the interesting thing is, you go for it, you're like a twenty-year life.
But the amount of a third.
You know, you're over there.
It doesn't make any sense to you that part now, it makes no sense.
I would agree with you.
But it's only one that seems to do that, so I don't know.
Um, two of them, well, the two of them are zero because they're the first year of the loan, which there's no paying on. Um, and then.
Which is that, that's the.
The highway truck and the medical rescue vehicle.
So we're gonna leave those at zero, that's what we're gonna do.
So can we?
Well, it's year two for one and year one for the other, right?
Well, we're.
The first two years or something.
While they're, while we are here.
Here. His, but we are.
Okay, if that's what you mean.
Yes, we are.
While we're here, can we go over what specifically the ones that are coming out of free cash are, do we have that break down?
Twenty-six thousand, which I believe is the truck.
The medical rescue vehicle?
I have twenty-nine oh fifty and twenty-nine six forty-three.
Twenty-nine oh fifty and twenty-nine six forty-three, is, is, that's the truck and then the med rescue.
Well, it should be the library, the truck, and the med.
Well, what's, what's the, what's the principle that we're paying on? So I, I had, I had it here that we were gonna pay the highway truck principal forty thousand dollars. But we were gonna pay the, the minimum plus free cash to bring it to forty thousand dollars, is that what we were gonna do?
Yes, what I'm asking, and I'm trying to get clarity on now, is those free cash numbers.
So I just gave you the three figures that, that totals the eighty-four, I didn't, can you give them to me again?
It's twenty-nine oh fifty for the library, because that brings us to a hundred.
Okay, for library, and then twenty-six thousand?
It's for the medical rescue vehicle.
And then twenty-nine six forty-three.
It's for the highway truck principal, highway truck principal is twenty-nine six forty-three. And then, what, what did we decide for the tandem axle, it was seven thousand?
Seven, I just didn't put that in there yet, I could not wait until.
Seven, seven thousand seven hundred sixty-six is what it came. Pay thirty-three.
Oh, and I'm.
But the, um, the medical rescue, was that coming out of free cash, was that coming out of?
Those three numbers that I just gave are coming out of free cash. That totals the eighty-four, six ninety-three that's listed.
Do you have what our free cash will be at for all the things we talked about?
Yes, the only number not included in there is the seven thousand.
Well, can we just put it in? So what would be the balance of free cash?
Working on that.
You don't know if it's right?
Yes.
Well, it's right, it's right, and if it's not right, we'll change it, but it's right.
Negative.
I just wanna double check.
It only, yes, it's only fun.
I heard this.
That hurts not a problem, as long as it turns out that the bank is actually okay with our modified.
We can do it.
Of course, like, I, I trust that my arithmetic was correct, I just don't trust the bank guy.
Useful life of my house is a lot more than thirty years, so I can.
God, let's hope so.
So.
Maybe not without further capital investment.
Yeah, yeah, that's kind of, yeah, that's true, that was the idea why, why they took her, they had enough sense to say.
So, Susan, where did you come up with that skip the two years and divide it? Did you comprehend, or did you think it's true?
Uh, well, that was my question on the basis of his, uh, you know, let me find it, you know. Uh, what were the keywords for that have been, what was it from, like loan?
I just do wanna get the debt service a little bit hammered out, at least to where we're at, and if we have to change, we have to change it, but at least we know where, where.
And I do want to talk about revenue before we leave tonight.
Okay, well, we still have a cou, we still have nine hundred in special articles.
So it'd be thirty-two, seven eighty-six, seventy-one, we did a debt balance.
So it'd be thirty-two thousand.
What, what did you, what are the, uh, actual nettle payments?
Well, I'm gonna read them again, I'm gonna read them again, sorry, but I'm gonna read them again, and if anyone disagrees, you can just say it. That way we check, you're on the same page, I'm on the same page.
Is this, which one are you reading?
I'm gonna be very clear about what I'm gonna do. I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be so precise, it's, no, I'm gonna, I'm gonna tell you what I'm gonna read you.
Okay.
So the operating budget, highway truck principal, zero, this is all from our operating budget, highway truck principal, zero. Highway truck interest, five thousand six hundred and thirty-six fourteen, medical rescue vehicle principal, zero. Medical rescue vehicle interest, five thousand. Tandem axle principle, twenty-five thousand. Tandem axle interest, four thousand six hundred and seventy-two sixty-three. Library loan principal, seventy thousand nine fifty, library loan interest, thirty-two thousand eighty-five seventy-five. In free cash, these are all principal payments. So additional free cash principal payments, highway truck principal, twenty-nine thousand six hundred and forty-three. Medical rescue vehicle principal, twenty-six thousand, tandem axle principle, seven thousand seven hundred and sixty-six. Library loan principal, twenty-nine thousand and fifty dollars, we're all on the same page?
We're on the same page, and that, and those are all, but those, those, those additionals that you talked about are free cash.
Yes.
And those additionals are the highway truck, well, the highway truck principal is free cash, the vehicle truck principal is free cash.
They're all, they all have a free cash component and operating.
And the net left on free cash at the end of the day.
It's roughly thirty thousand, we're working on it, we can adjust that very easily based on.
Sure, we're still on the board.
All right.
I don't like surprises.
And here is the answer to your question and why I believe that's the case, so, this is what, um, David Eaton Paul from Unibank. Explained to Sarah the Treasurer when she asked this question. There will be a required pay down for that equipment in October, but the amount depends on the useful life selected by the select board. Under the Massachusetts general laws, the select board can choose a useful life of twenty years for departmental equipment. For example, if they select a ten-year useful life, the minimum pay down would be one-eighth of the original amount. If it were two hundred thousand dollars, that would be twenty-five thousand.
But is that the original, or can you do it whatever?
Uh, the minimum pay down is one-eighth of the original amount.
I know, but we don't know.
Can you change it?
This guy doesn't know, we're gonna figure it out.
Right, so we, that's my, my question is whether, like, it, it is clear that we know from experience. That the first year of a loan has no required payment, and I believe it's the first two years of a loan, based on the financing. Numbers that they've sent us and the history, like, always zero for that first year. So I'm assuming that that's why they do that N number of years minus two, because they're expecting you have no payment those first two years. And then they're just dividing the original amount by that remainder, is it a sensible formula? No, it doesn't mean it isn't the required formula.
And then you change it midway and say, hey, by the way, we now think the useful life is on five years.
We're gonna, we're gonna find out there.
And so they're gonna start less.
We never would have voted five years.
So then Sarah then responds, David explains that the pay down of the axle truck has to be one-third of the remit, of. The two hundred thousand dollars, which is sixty-six, six sixty-seven, unless the select board votes to extend the life of the truck. So she seems to indicate that we can in fact change, right, um. And, and then, and there's my commentary about thinking my calculation is very hard for exactly all these reasons.
We've had ten years. At ten years, it's gonna last for twenty years, but at ten years, we might need to start putting some money into it.
Yeah, so if that's what you want, you wanna pay it off.
And we wanna pay it off all in advance, we actually need values, right? And it's still, by the way, it's gonna be paid off at this rate, two more years after this. We got the truck since I've been on the board.
So five years, two more years, and you've been eight, three years.
But hopefully it has a lifetime length in that.
Ah, those have twenty, yeah.
Well, we just made that up.
No, that would be research, it does, but, yeah, the largest trucks do.
Well, look at the dump trucks that drive through town, even on like big excavating companies, they're all brand new.
Oh, well, I would hope they wouldn't be brand new. But they're not, not brand new pretty quick.
Try on Scott McEntee.
Yeah, yeah.
They're not, there's some brand new trucks.
Right, but there's a difference between brand new and twenty years old. There, there's twenty years in there.
So.
That's where we're at.
I, I, I know you were very specific about what you said.
Yeah.
But I just wanna make sure I understand what you said when you said it.
Yeah.
So, cause I have a note that the highway truck principal we're gonna pay forty thousand dollars on.
Well, that note was thrown around, and then it was changed. Because we decided we wanted to pay it over instead of, it was a hundred and sixty thousand dollar vehicle.
Yep.
And the forty thousand came out of dividing a hundred and sixty by four. We said, we'll divide the remainder by four more years.
Yep.
Cause the remaining is a hundred and twenty. Is this what we did?
Yeah, technically it's one eighteen bucks.
What interest, what interest rate are we, we were gonna get some information on interest rates, what interest rate are we going on?
Well, when we finally get the proposal from him, but it's not till October, so we're just estimating now.
And then you divide that by four.
So what rate are you estimating?
I don't know.
So that, and so that number is free cash now, yes.
Uh, it looks like they were estimating for October twenty twenty-four that the rate would be five percent.
Five percent was the estimate.
But that's from last year's estimate, that's not this year's estimate, which we won't get.
I think it's gonna be higher, I think it's gonna be higher.
It might be.
All right, so having debt service all figured out. Free cash, special article going in for ninety-two thousand four fifty-nine, clearly delineating the four different principles it's going towards. We're gonna move on to nine hundreds.
I have a question, so what we were discussing with the fire department is not in there, right?
Yes, it is.
It is, so that's why the forty-seven, so if that doesn't happen, what would that increase without it? And. I, I mean, I, I, the more I think about this, yeah, we gotta get it, because my understanding is, once you pay one benefit, you gotta pay unemployment, you gotta pay a benefit package. You can't choose and choose which benefit, so that means unemployment would go up, every, every insurance would go up.
We'd seem to be, you can choose, but.
That's where we need input. Yeah, we need input, I wouldn't debate it.
Without, without which fourteen and what was the dollar figure?
So it's currently forty, so it would be twenty-three each, so that'd be forty-six, and so the increase would be fourteen percent, so forty-seven.
One hundred and fifty-six thousand three oh five.
One, one nine fourteen you're talking about.
Should we change that back?
I think we should just leave it until we get word from the fire company, because there may be changes, but we're not gonna know till that gets finalized. And it's better to leave it as it is until we have a real thing on the board.
So it's a question mark.
It's a question mark.
Well, I, I was thinking we could just put the money, I thought we could put the money in the fire department with an asterisk, the amount, and then decide how it gets paid, instead of putting it in health insurance, which might trigger other things.
Since this isn't what's going on, the warrant anyway, until we have a clear decision, I'm not sure it matters where we put it tonight. Since we all know that it's a placeholder and it's probably gonna move, we don't know where it's gonna move. Let's leave it until we know where it's gonna move, and then move it where it's going, instead of moving it around multiple times.
Any other, any other questions before, I don't think we have much to talk about special articles. One thing to know, so it's eight percent, uh, as it stands. But in that internal revisions column, which is, if you look at total operating expenses, you see, last year was five million, two thousand. This year proposal is five million, four hundred and sixty-four thousand. But. Oh, it's changed. Little things have changed, but you know, you don't.
Yeah, but you.
Sixty-four is an extra sixty grand, that's not the little thing.
Well, it's.
We're gonna.
I don't know, but long story short, there is fifty-one thousand dollars that we put from free cash into the operating budget this year. So it's also going up that additional fifty thousand dollars from what we taxed last year to what we're proposing being taxed this year. The eight percent is after you include the fifty thousand of free cash that we put towards operating expenses at this special town meeting. Rather than what did we tax last year, what are we taxing this year? I'm just throwing that.
I'm sorry, Justin, you say that again.
Um, last year, we raised, you know, five million, well, okay. We put fifty thousand, fifty-one thousand dollars of free cash towards the operating budget at special town meeting. The way that the eight percent is calculated, as I understand it, that free cash is factored in to money that we put to the operating budget this year. But if you compare what we proposed to last year's town meeting versus what we're proposing to this year's town meeting, it's actually fifty thousand more than the eight percent shows, if that.
Right, so what you're saying is the fifty thousand last year was baseline?
I don't know, it's really, when I started talking.
Was baseline into the budget.
For me to explain it, and I don't want to get hung up on it. But I'm happy to talk to anyone.
Is it, is fundamentally, is this the number you're, this, this proposed change about?
The number, the real number is like nine percent, nine, or the number that I'm throwing around, which is not the real number, but there's two numbers. If, one way to look at it, Susan, would just be, what do we propose as the operating budget to be raised in appropriate last year, what are we proposing to raise in appropriate this year?
Right, so this.
Before the whole tax recap.
Right, right, right.
But I think it's more like.
So that.
It's just fifty thousand, because that fifty thousand, that's the internal trend.
Oh, right, right.
Revisions. When, okay, let's look at a specific account, because it is worth knowing.
No, I see what you're saying. The fifty thousand more was last year, not this year's.
So go to, if you go to four thirty-three transfer station operations, it shows that we're going down one percent.
Yeah, but you're not, because you went up, you went up with the free cash of forty-one.
We went up, yeah, with the free cash.
Cash, that's.
So. Last year, our operating budget, we asked for ninety thousand raised inappropriate, and this year we're asking for a hundred and twenty-nine thousand raised inappropriate. But that free cash gets in the middle.
I can see that, it makes it more complicated.
And the problem is, Susan, we've been over this, because Susan, you and I discussed this last year, now you're way, perfect, and I can see why you would do it this way, and I'm not saying we don't.
No, I just had trouble following what, why you're, where the fifty was, but now I get it. I just didn't understand that you were talking about the S T M, the V S M.
Yeah.
Which makes total sense.
Right, so it is, it is a baseline, you've increased the baseline. That needs to be ro, raised and appropriated, that was originally paid for by free cash last year.
Yeah, right.
It's called a baseline increase, it was rolled, and that's what we're scared about in a lot of the things, so that's a really good thing to point out, Justin.
Free cash we applied last year plus the free cash from the S T M.
Like, that, that's my, that's my worry about the mill foil, I don't want that thirty-six thousand rolled into the baseline.
Fifty thousand dollars to put on the special town meeting.
Uh, just look at this one line, transfer station operations.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying, we're, I did that math.
Four thirty-three, or the Excel line one on three.
It just makes it seem like the operating budget is going up less than it's going up from last year.
Because the most of the increase actually came in the middle of the year, right, from with the extra forty-one.
Yeah, and the point being, the forty-one thousand that we put towards that, uh, uh, S T M wasn't part of the tax rate. It was from free cash, and so this year we're proposing, it's really raising it by about forty thousand dollars as far as taxes are concerned.
Sort of forces, I, I guess, yep, that's interesting.
Um, is, any other comments? Are we pretty much done with budget for tonight?
I think so.
Okay, anyone that will, uh, we're meeting next?
Wait, I, we, I have questions on the revenue, so, uh, what do you want to do?
Wait, just let, let's figure out when we're meeting next, before we dive into revenue.
Right, next Tuesday, that's my, we need to know my time.
For a while, so. Where are we here?
Who is next? So that's the select board.
So the select board meeting next Tuesday, March twelfth, does finance committee want to join us for budget?
If you need us, if we need to.
I think it'd be good to wrap up.
We don't want to have our own meetings anymore, we like you.
So.
Always meet together.
You guys are so talented.
Three, go steady, six thirty, what works for people?
That's the twelfth?
Yeah, Tuesday, March twelfth.
I can do anytime from five fifty, five thirty on.
Okay.
But I'll come when I suppose.
Okay, well, I can't meet, I probably can't meet earlier five, I can probably maybe do five, if not, more reasonably five thirty. So we might, probably the earliest we'd have a joint meeting is, is six, but we might push up to six if that's workable for everybody, the joint meeting.
I can do that. And I'm just gonna put it in at six P M.
I'm just assuming we're gonna be at five thirty, if we'll have it probably at least a half hour. For one thing, we have to make sure that we have ten minutes.
You have to make sure what, Susan, I want to do.
Minutes, our own minutes, it's not anything to do with finance.
Well, we'll do a set of minutes.
No, we, we're copying your minutes, we're proving yours is part of ours.
Good luck with that.
Um.
There's a, there's a server charge for that. It's twenty-five hours of pay.
Run.
Are there any, any, okay, so we're gonna meet next week, timing TBD based on the select board agenda. The joint meeting is probably gonna be at six or six thirty.
Okay, and can I just add to that, uh, finance committee members, do we need to meet separately, or so far, there's nothing we need to discuss outside of this realm? Jeff, Roger, can you just weigh in?
No, I don't think so. I don't think we need to meet separately, and our next meeting is on the twentieth, I have.
Okay.
Next.
And I might be back in the burks here, so, all right, perfect, great.
Okay, um, and that meeting will be our last regularly scheduled meeting for a while, so hopefully we'll nail down everything that can be nailed down, and there may be a few hanging chats, and we'll, we'll handle them later, but we'll nail down what we can. Okay, Eileen, you had some comments on revenue.
Uh, thank you, and what a nice job you just did, Justin, bringing us together. Um, I have two tabs, I'm, I'm on the, um, not the budget you just sent, Melissa, but I took a brief look at that, and I think the numbers are the same. So I'm working off of the tabs called revenue and for revenue chart. And for all of you, that for revenue chart was what we came up with last year to do the budget briefing for the town, to explain to them where the money comes from and how we're choosing to send it, and how, right, it goes into the whole thing that we were explaining to Mickey. So my, I have several questions, but the first two is on the fiscal, fiscal year twenty-five estimated. On the chart tab, it says five million, one fifty, two two oh, and on the revenue tab, it says five nine nine one, four three three oh, for the same year. So I didn't know why those aren't linked, and they're the same number, they should be the same number, I don't know which one's right.
Which, are you looking at fifty-one total revenue?
Yeah.
I'm looking at fifty-one, five oh, on the revenue, for the revenue chart, but if you go to the tab before, it says revenue, it says five nine one one. So fiscal year twenty-five, there's eight hundred thousand difference.
It's a different number from the total revenue on the chart. So revenue and for revenue chart, the two adjacent tabs don't have the same amount for revenue.
So those, so that needs to be, yeah. Yeah, and then my next question on revenue chart is line twenty-three, Susan, I want you to look at that. Line twen, this is really for Susan, line twenty-three is solid waste tax. And that, yes, and that is going up, it's not significant, but almost ten grand. Everything else is pretty much holding steady, but that one is way, uh, not, compared to everything else steady, that's way up, and I didn't remember thinking that's what we should do, based on our discussions in the transfer station meeting.
Wait, I'm seeing it as the same.
It's the same, sixty-four for F Y twenty-four, it's estimated at sixty-four. Hopefully they'll actually raise that, because we raised the fees, the base sticker fee, thirty.
Right, so do we want to raise it? Fifty-six, the problem with the, that was an aberration that year, we don't know why, right, we never figured that out.
So typically you estimate, uh, having been spending a lot of time looking at the revenue sheets because of the ambulance thing, local receipts for all the towns, the de facto thi, thing seems to be to estimate revenues on the very low side, because you don't want to allow for the possibility that revenues will fall short.
Of course.
So I'm not sure what that number should be set to, but I'm just pointing out there.
No, 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 I.
Idea, Eileen. Like, there, a lot of the revenue sheets that I looked at this week are estimating the revenues at like, less than half of what they typically get. I don't know what their rubric is, but I was like, wow, that's real.
I know, but that's, but that's why I'm raising it, and that's why I reference back to the fifty-six thousand. Like, what, we pegged to last year, which is okay, but I, I'm just, I don't know, I, I don't have confidence in that. And then one other line I have a question on is the, so just to, everybody to think about, is the new growth line. So we have, the new growth is kind of half of last year. That kind of makes sense, growth is slowing, but fees, fees, building permit fees are the same, so if growth is slowing by half, I don't know why we would not bring down fees.
Eileen, F Y twenty-five estimated is in almost every case, just what it was last year. By the time it's being filled out, months and months and months from now, right?
No, it's not, Justin, uh, it's, it's in the line of new growth, it's half.
Eileen, so, but the tax rate recap won't be filled out for many months. Well, I think we'll have fiscal year twenty, no, it is every year, you have fiscal year twenty-four actual before you estimate this. We don't have fiscal year.
Okay, so you're saying.
So.
Okay.
I think it doesn't make sense.
So you're saying we'll have that before the meeting?
No, what I'm saying is, you get fiscal year twenty-four actual on each tax rate recap, which is where these numbers match. You have fiscal year twenty-four actual, and then you estimate fiscal year twenty-five.
Yeah.
So we're, we don't have the actual from this year until many months from now. Let's have a more reasonable.
Exactly, exactly, Justin, which is why, when you're cutting something in half, you have to look at the resulting other taxes, which might be cut half. So if the accountant thinks that our new growth is half of what it was, that means building fees, permit, all are gonna be left that i- if that number is half. You see what I'm saying? I don't want to, we just said we don't want to.
So long, I don't know what month the tax rate recap is done, but it's like September, October?
Yeah.
It's October, so let's spend, the finance committee, the select board, the town administrator, the accountant, let's hammer this down in the summer, but not right now.
Because it doesn't affect anything, this does not have anything to do with what goes on the warrant at A T M.
Or the operation.
And it does have to do with how much we'll collect in taxes and how much we need to raise. If the numbers are less and we're not seeing a good trend, then it doesn't matter when we get it in February, we're already screwed, do you understand what I'm saying?
I, I can see why, I mean, I could see why you'd want to know if you controlled absolutely every part of the process, what we're collecting, but the reality of it is, in the operating budget, we're really raising money for what we need, we can't, it's, there's only so much predicting we can do, and in the fall, when they go to the tax rate recap, and we have actual.
We, we will take this offline, and I won't keep us tonight, but the bottom line is, the same kind of assumptions we're making on the operations side, we need to be thinking about on the revenue side. If new growth is slowing, there's less fees. So we're raising the operating money, thinking it's gonna be flat, but what if it's not flat, the taxes, what if it goes down? We're even more in the hole, see what I'm saying? Based on some of these assumptions. I understand it's done on, based on actuals eventually, that's all I'm raising, I think we should be worried about it. I mean, as it stands now, it looks like we are decreasing our revenue by almost ten percent this year.
Every year, that's how it works, every year.
No, every year.
Twenty percent.
No. That's not what the chart shows.
Department of Local Service is very.
We should, we should take this offline, because we believe that you have.
We'll take it offline, we'll take it offline. I just think we should be a little smarter about it, okay.
Okay, um.
Sorry, sorry to raise it at the end.
Is the finance committee done, and, and then the select board will probably stick around to do a set of minutes?
The finance committee.
I make a motion to, uh.
Second.
To, uh, to end this finance meeting. Section, so all, all is in favor?
Aye, 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 aye.
Thank you, thank you all.
For public comment.
Okay, so.
Folks, it's been a pleasure. Thank you, thank you, Mickey.
I wish we had like the, the cantina, so you could go out and read out. Right.
It's open in the summer.
Over here.
Oh, the, oh, here.
Yeah, oh, cantina part, like, yeah, they're gonna open something else, but.
People have a little river.
Thank you, thank you. Enjoy your evening, uh, thanks for stopping by early.
Yeah, I'm gonna like enjoy my evening, right?
We have something.
I'm gonna invite you to watch.
Have a good. Aye, 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 that's gonna haunt me for duration, I think.
Okay.
Two twenty.
Two twenty, so I was fine with all of the comments you guys made.
What was the question about the term? It was a three-year term for our board.
Um, I believe, I, but for some reason Frank tossed out three-year term, and I didn't know why. But it needs to have a term in there, so.
Yeah.
I think that is a mistake.
Okay, there we go, fixed.
Nice.
See you, Roger.
Thank you.
Yep, me too, and does that mean approve the minutes of two twenty, twenty-four as amended?
Second amendment.
Vote. Yes, then yes, continue minutes, man, it's approval. Do we have, do we have unanticipated, we dealt with the police donation, it's eight o'clock. Any other unanticipated business? Please. I can't even.
Here. See, there's, if there's nothing else, except the twenty, twenty seven, the twenty-seven minutes, but I thought that's the only one minute, okay, fine.
I did do, I did do them, but Frank.
I do.
Okay.
You didn't?
No, I haven't done the twenty-seven.
All right.
No questions in public?
All right, motion adjourned.
They're so public.
Uh, we'll vote on adjourned.
Yes.
Yeah.
And yes, uh, unanimous, meeting turned at eight P M.
We're on for five.
Five-thirty.